It's Friday, May 7, 2021, and it is 9:08 a.m. Live web streaming will be available through the State Board of Education website, Good morning and welcome to the State Board of Education meeting. As Commissioner stated a little bit ago, for many of you, this is your first State Board of Education meeting. And I just want to add that I'm so proud to have it hosted here because this is my district, and it is the Commissioner's district because I'm his board representative. So we're really excited to be here, and thank you. We appreciate this. Board members, please engage your microphones before speaking and turn off when you are done speaking. And please turn off or mute your cell phones if you haven't already, and I ask that of the audience as well, so there are no distractions. Agenda item 1, call to order. The State Board meeting will now come to order. Patricia Tim contacted me in advance to let me know she would be absent from today's meeting. Agenda item 1.1. Andrea, please call the roll.
Patty Goobles? Jaclyn Morrison?
Present.
Debra Neary?
Here.
Patsy Cojones?
Here.
Lisa Fricki?
Here.
Maureen Nichols?
Here.
Robyn Stevens?
Here.
Patricia Tim? Commissioner Blumstead? Seven present, one absent.
Thank you, Andrea. Agenda item 1.2, please rise and join me in a special place. My allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Microphone, Maureen.
Thank you. Agenda item 1.3, information regarding the Open Meeting Act is posted as you enter the room from the main hallway doors. The Open Meetings Act is also posted on the State Board of Education's website, www.education NE.gov/StateBoard. Agenda item 1.4, COVID-19 meeting protocol. Ryan For.
I think I'll cover that for Ryan. Just be as cautious as you can and respectful of other folks and the distances that they have. And thanks, again, for being here.
Agenda item 2, public comment period. We will now have our public comment period. This period of public comment is available for any person who wishes to address the State Board on subjects within its authority. Please note that public comment should be on topics related to the State Board's constitutional and statutory authority. And thanks again to the members of the public who are in attendance. Agenda item 2.1, request for 10-minute special appearance. We have two 10-minute special appearances today. 2.1A, Abby Swatsworth has requested and has been granted a special appearance to comment. Abby, you have 10 minutes. Welcome, Abby.
Thank you. Thank you for the opportunity to present this morning. My name is Abby Swatsworth, and I am the Executive Director of Out Nebraska, a statewide nonprofit organization working to celebrate and empower thriving LGBTQ communities. As a servant leader in the LGBTQ community, I'm testifying in support of sexual orientation and gender identity and expression, SOGI, within the health standards and the currently included age-appropriate ways. According to the American College of Obstetricians and Gynecologists, comprehensive sexuality education should begin early in childhood and continue through a person's lifespan. Programs should not only focus on reproductive development, prevention of STIs and unintended pregnancy, but also teach about forms of sexual expression, healthy sexual and non-sexual relationships, gender identity and sexual orientation and questioning, communication, recognizing and preventing sexual violence, consent, and decision-making. In following the discussion regarding the proposed health standards thus far, I've heard some common myths that I would like to address. Myth number one, children are too young to understand the concepts of orientation and identity. In truth, young people are coming out at younger ages than ever before. A 2008 research study of LGB youth found that 75% recalled feeling different in childhood, and that awareness of difference usually came between four and 12 years old, as early as three and eight years on average. A 2015 study of transgender youth found that the average age of talking about gender being different was five for trans girls and eight for trans boys, and it is not uncommon to do so as early as two to three years old. It is certainly true that a big part of adolescents is exploring and coming to understand your gender and sexuality. Young people may demonstrate an evolving understanding of these aspects of themselves. This exploration and evolution does not mean that it is impossible for a young person to know who they are. Some young people who are questioning their SOGI may feel pressure from within, from their peers, or from their families, to choose a label or figure out how they identify. Questioning youth should be supported and assured that it is absolutely normal to question and explore SOGI, and that it is okay not to know. Myth number two, being LGBTQ is a mental illness. According to the American Psychological Association and supported by additional research, quote, "Sexuality occurs across a continuum. Same-gender attraction and relationships are normal variations of human sexuality. Similarly, a gender identity that is incongruent with assigned sex at birth, as well as a gender expression that diverges from stereotypical cultural norms for a particular gender, are normal variations of human gender. Being a sexual or gender minority or identifying as LGBTQ is not pathological," end quote. It is well researched that LGBTQ youth are at increased risk for poor mental health outcomes. However, increased minority stress, often in the form of rejection and discrimination, is thought to be the primary reason for the adverse mental health outcomes observed among LGBTQ youth. Rather than LGBTQ identity itself causing mental illness, societal attitudes that lead to discrimination, bullying, toxic gender stereotyping, family rejection, conversion therapy, and religiously-based punishment of sexual and gender minority people create environments that cause harm and create conditions ripe for poor mental health. LGBTQ youth, who report having at least one accepting adult, were 40% less likely to report a suicide attempt in the past year. Research bears out that supportive families, peers, school, and community environments are associated with improved psychosocial outcomes for sexual minority youth. As young people come out at earlier ages, it is imperative that we do all we can to increase the supportive environments available for LGBTQ youth in a shared effort to improve their quality of life. That means challenging the attitudes that cause harm and committing to creating those protective environments. For those listening along, much of this information cites sources, which I have included in the written portion for the board, because I believe that it is important that we follow science. I also believe that including SOGI in the health standards is a matter of equity. Beginning in early elementary grades to represent a variety of family constellations shows respect for LGBTQ families. Research estimates that in Nebraska, 32% of LGBTQ adults aged 25-plus are raising children. We cannot pretend these families do not exist because they make some members of our communities uncomfortable. Furthermore, it is important to include SOGI, giving the understanding of LGBT youth in regard to their own lived experience, as already referenced. Young people are increasingly telling us who they are. It is our duty as parents, educators, faith and community leaders to honor their truth. Health standards that do not include SOGI send the message that LGBTQ students are not worthy of being educated. This erasure of students' realities rejects their identities and causes harm when it is vital to build equitable protective environments for all students. Excerpts from Nebraska Nondiscrimination and Equitable Education Opportunities in Schools' Position Statement, quote, "The goal of equity efforts is that all students are known, heard, and supported while having access to the opportunities and resources needed for success. Educational equity is defined by providing each student meaningful access to the educational resources they need at the right moment, at the right level, and with the right intensity." Equity requires that these opportunities and outcomes exist for all Nebraskans, including but not limited to and unrestricted by age, citizenship status, color, disability, economic status, ethnicity, family mobility, family structure, gender expression, gender identity, genetic information, marital status, national origin, political affiliation, pregnancy, race, religion, sex, sexual orientation, tribal membership, or veteran status," end quote. Through this powerful position statement, it is clear to me that the Nebraska School Board is committed to the learning of all students. I urge you respectfully to continue your commitment to equity. Furthermore, I respectfully urge you to listen to science over fear. The science is clear. Evaluations of comprehensive sex education programs show that these programs can help youth delay the onset of sexual activity, reduce the number of sexual partners, and increase condom and contraceptive use. Having received a very limited sex education as a member of the LGBTQ community, I recall my own difficulty navigating my early feelings of being different. Because I did not see myself in descriptions of "normal" relationships, I tried desperately to make myself normal by engaging in risky sexual behaviors. We know that today's LGBTQ youth are still at increased risk of experiencing teen pregnancy and contracting STIs, including HIV. After all these years, the educational system is continuing to withhold vital information that can decrease these risks and improve the quality of life, not just for LGBTQ youth, but for all youth. This withholding of information could be seen as active oppression. In my role, again, as a servant leader in the LGBTQ community, it is my sacred honor to advocate for all youth. Thank you again for the opportunity. I am open for questions.
Thank you, Abby.
Thank you.
Thank you, Abby. 2.1B, Karen Bowling has requested and has been granted a special appearance to comment. Karen, you have 10 minutes.
Good morning, Commissioner Blumstead and State Board members. As stated, I am Karen Bowling, and I serve as the Executive Director of Nebraska Family Alliance. Thank you for this opportunity to address the board this morning. Nebraska Family Alliance was established in 1988. We are a nonprofit policy research education organization. We represent a diverse statewide network of thousands of individuals, families, faith leaders from multiple denominations, nonprofits, educators, and administrators. We also collaborate with 39 other state policy councils across the nation. The proposed health standards provide many excellent objectives for students, and we applaud those efforts ensuring that health and safety for every child. We can all agree that every child and student in Nebraska has inherent value and should be treated with dignity and respect, regardless of ideology, sexual orientation, or political and religious affiliation. We can also recognize that parents are the primary educators of their children. Ultimately, they are responsible for overseeing their children's education and schools best serve students when they inform, involve, and respect parents and guardians. We believe two things can be true at once. Students who identify as transgender deserve the same educational opportunities as their peers and should be treated with respect. Schools also should adopt truthful, compassionate, and commonsense policy solutions that do not threaten the privacy, safety, and dignity of any student. We believe schools should teach basic biological facts and anatomy without introducing age-inappropriate, unscientific ideas about sex, sexual orientation, or gender identity. Today, my purpose is to focus on areas of concern from the first draft of health standards. First, the selection process for the writing team was flawed and needs clarification. Secondly, the writing team lacked evidence-based, medically accurate, factual subject experts. Third, the Human Growth and Development Standards sexualizes children with age-inappropriate terms and content. And finally, the proposed health standards infringe on parental rights in guiding their children's education. Clarity on the writing team. There were notable absences from the writing team selected. Lacking representation were parents, educators, and accredited private school educators. Transparency is needed in the process to ensure those selected are committed to factual and science-based standards. The current proposed standards are a change in curriculum approach. In a recently released report in January 2021 by Heritage, "The Culture of American K-12 Education," a national survey of parents and school board members, and I've noted all the references here, revealed that comprehensive policies that emphasize risk reduction are not the same or as effective as policies that emphasize sexual risk avoidance. Around the country, state educators and boards are beginning to change their curriculum approach, and now 10 states have prohibited sexual orientation and gender identity curriculum. In order to increase school accountability to parents and educations, the selection process for the advisory and writing teams need to be clearly defined on how interested and qualified persons can be considered. Secondly, writing teams should be factual and not politically motivated. Well-intentioned school systems often seek direction regarding their gender initiatives and may turn to political advocacy groups for education and policy guidance in this realm. When these groups promote and encourage the concept of gender identity in schools, there are many harmful unintended consequences. Saja Ayeded, licensed professional counselor who works exclusively with teens who began questioning their gender and adolescent, has noted the direct correlation between ill-conceived gender-affirmative school policies and the development of sudden painful and unnecessary suffering of teens. Gender dysphoria often develops after children are exposed to the concepts of gender ideology. And you'll note in your packet, we have a Parents' Resource Guide that we were part of collaborating with. In just seven years, there have been a nearly 2,000% increase in children seeking treatment for sexual identity confusion in the United Kingdom, according to a study released in New Atlantis, also in your packet. The Proposed Human Growth and Development Standards sexualize children are third concern. We recognize that sex education is being taught. However, the proposed health standards have moved from a biology and character-based approach. The umbrella term "comprehensive sexuality education" encompasses sex education for school-aged children that emphasizes risk-reduction techniques, as opposed to character-based education that provides children with skills and tools to avoid risk. Children need and deserve guidance, not only information. Whatever we tell children, we also teach them. What we teach them will shape their entire lives. Children are increasingly being targeted for sexual messages, images, and themes, and this is happening at younger ages. They are exposed to explicit sexual content by cultural forces, including social media and entertainment. But now, under the proposed health standards, they would even be exposed to graphic information about sex, abortion, and politicized ideas about sexual orientation and gender identity ideology in schools. We are asking the board to let kids be kids. We understand and acknowledge that sex education is already happening in schools, but it needs to happen appropriately. Every child deserves an education that is suited for their specific needs and development as guided by their parents, and one that is free of graphic sexual curriculum or promotion of abortion and SOGI information. If children are being bullied at school because they do not conform to traditional views on sex or have interests that differ from their same-sex peers, schools should address this through their anti-bullying policies. Fostering a culture of respect for difference. In a pluralistic society, we must educate our children to respect one another with not needing to reject their body through permanent life-altering hormone therapy and surgery. Other specific concerns are kindergartens would be taught about cohabitating and same-gender families with no mention in this curriculum of traditional married families with a mom and a dad. First graders would be taught to define gender identity and gender role stereotypes. The social construct of gender fluidity is introduced in the second grade. Education curriculum that introduces terms as anal and oral sex, hormone blockers, et cetera, falls short in developing interpersonal relationships that lead to a lifetime of healthy, non-risk behaviors. In your packet, as I've mentioned, you will see the Resource Guide released in 2019. Nebraska Family Alliance collaborated with 38 other state policy councils in Appendix 6. Because we continue to hear from parents, their growing concern of CSE health curriculums being introduced. Their young children came home from school confused about if they were a girl or a boy. In response, this research and education project was developed. Supporting organizations with very diverse political ideologies joined us. The negative consequences that result when society regards bodily sex as irrelevant and public schools should never feel pressured to force boys and girls to sacrifice their bodily privacy and promote unscientific theories about human. The final is on parental rights, which you can read, and I just want to thank you for this time. Any questions?
All right. All right. Thank you. Thanks, everyone. And I didn't stop you.
Thank you, Karen.
I didn't stop you, but I will ask from now on that we don't have outbursts of, all right, just so we can make sure that we can hear. And I just will say, please don't do those outbursts. We understand your emotions with this and do appreciate that. So we just want to be sure that we can get through as many public comments as possible. I do believe that we have at least a chance, and I'm going to ask the board if they would decide how they want to handle this. I believe we have roughly 75 people signed up. So what we did last time was actually limit it to two minutes per person. We talked about limiting it overall, and I would leave it up to the board for your discussion on, would you simply like to make sure everyone got two minutes to speak, or would you rather limit it in some other fashion?
Thank you, Commissioner. And one other part, the disruptions are going to just lengthen the time for everyone. So we want to make sure we get everyone in. We will now move to our public comment period of five minutes. Those wishing to speak, signed in at the table outside of the meeting room. We have 75. We have 75 public comment cards turned in, and the public will speak in the order the cards were handed out upon arrival. Agenda item 2.2A, in accordance with Board Policy B9, and due to the number of persons wishing to comment, is there a motion regarding public comment time limits? Lisa?
I would like to hear from as many people as possible. If we go with the five minutes, we might be leaving people out who have driven a far distance to speak. So I would like to hear from as many people as possible. So that's my comment.
Robyn, do you have a motion?
Yes, Madam President. I move to limit the total amount of time for public comment at this meeting to a maximum of two hours of speaking time, not to include transition between times of speakers and breaks, and to reduce the amount of time for each speaker from five minutes to two minutes. And I would add that that is what was done in our previous meeting in April.
Do I have a second? Do I have a second?
I second that.
Okay. Motion made by Robyn, seconded by Patsy.
The last time--
Microphone on.
Technologically challenged. The last time we were here, two minutes felt really short to me. I thought that a lot of people had things to say. I personally would like to up that to three minutes. I know that's not that significant. It is an extra hour that we would be here, but it did really feel like people at two minutes didn't get to say everything they wanted. So I would be willing to, or if other people would entertain another motion, I would like to do three minutes.
My concern is what we did to those folks who presented at the April board meeting. I find it somewhat inequitable that all of a sudden we would change from what we did
Debra?
And I also--
But I found from last time that really, we understood what they were saying within the two minutes. And for the really detailed information, there is a formal process, the online process, where we really hope everyone in the room is filling out and giving us the specific details about each of the standards and the grade level. And so I'm hoping that we can accomplish the same thing with the two minutes and also for the point Robyn pointed out, that in fairness to all the others that have given testimony in two minutes. Thank you.
Patsy?
And if you should be stopped, if I'd have to hold up the little red sign for you, if you should be stopped and you've prepared something and it gets cut off, then if you would just make sure to hand that into, who are we having them hand them into? On the end, over here?
Andrea.
Andrea will pick them up, and then we will have them to read. We will have them to read, so down on the end. Thank you. I'll be louder next time.
Any other discussion? Robyn?
My main concern actually deals with the two hours, and I'd like to hear the Board respond to that part of the motion, if they have something that they would like to share. Realizing, as I've heard, 75, that's going to limit numerous people in their presentation. So I guess that's a bigger concern of mine. I do include it in my motion, but I would like to hear if others feel that that's too restrictive, or just right, or whatever. I do appreciate the comments that others have made about the two minutes. Thank you.
Jacqueline?
So if we have 75 people who are signed up, and we are considering two minutes, that's 150 minutes, which is beyond two hours. So we'd at a minimum be looking at two and a half hours. I am uncomfortable if we allow people to sign, the 75 people to sign up, telling the last, let's see, that'd be 30, 15 people, that they don't get to speak, when we could just extend it to two and a half hours. So for that reason, I would say at a minimum, I believe we should be at two and a half hours.
Lisa?
I too believe that everyone should have two minutes that's signed up, at least, and if that's a half an hour, 45 minutes longer, I'm willing to stay for that. I think they took the time to come here, and we're already eliminating the time to two minutes. That all 75 should be heard.
So just what I'm hearing, just so I can make sure that we're getting this right, I don't believe we've heard yet any type of amendment to the motion, but I think what I was hearing was two minutes per person that signed up through the 75. Is that what I'm gathering? So someone would have to make an amendment to the motion or address it and such.
Patsy?
I have one question about that, and my question is, will we have other people join us, and will that number keep growing?
I don't believe so. I think we're pretty well taking the cards of the folks that are here, so I don't, I think we're in good shape if that was your motion.
Patsy, that's how it was done in last month. There was a cutoff. By the time we got to this point in the meeting, there was, it was cut off. Robyn?
I appreciate the Commissioner's point, and the reason that I asked for that, this discussion, is so that if I needed to make an amendment to my motion, I could easily, we could easily do that. So that's why I wanted to hear the discussion about two hours compared to my motion would be two and a half hours. My amendment, excuse me.
And that would include two minutes per speaker, or not?
Correct.
Speaker, please.
I've got it on, oh, I had it on, it even showed green, Madam Chair. Anyway, I don't know what you want me to repeat. I guess I could repeat it all.
Please do.
My motion would remain the same as far as the two minutes per person, but I would, if I make the motion or the amendment, it would extend to two and a half hours rather than the two hours, based on the discussion I want to hear from and have heard some from my colleagues.
So we have an amendment on the floor. To limit the total number of time for public comment at this meeting to a maximum of two and a half hours of speaking time, not to include transition time between speakers and breaks, and to reduce the amount of time for each speaker from five minutes to two minutes. And I need a second on that, correct? Is there a second on this? Jacqueline?
I would second it. I also, however, do believe, and I think we talked about this the last time, we probably need to amend the motion, Robyn, just to include that we would be cutting off the signup sheet pursuant to this motion as well, so that we would stop accepting new people who signed up beyond the 75.
Speaker?
It is on.
It is now.
Okay. Anyway, are you making that as a motion, Jacqueline? Or an amendment, excuse me?
Yeah, you can take him as friendly amendment, so.
Sure.
A friendly amendment.
That, I will accept that as a friendly amendment.
Debra, did you have something? Okay. Is that correct? Is that what you wanted, Jacqueline?
Received already, I think, is what she means.
Received already?
Yep.
Cut-off time, I'll read this in just a second. The motion is to limit the total amount of time for public comment at this meeting to a maximum of two and a half hours of speaking time, not to include transition time between speakers and breaks, and to reduce the amount of time for each speaker from five minutes to two minutes. The cutoff time will be what has been received at this point in time. Do I have a second on that? Friendly amendment?
If there's no objections, they can vote on that motion.
Okay. Are there any objections to this? Seeing none? Andrea, call the roll.
Goobles?
Yes. Oh, she said Goobles. I'm sorry.
Morrison?
Yes.
Neary?
Yes.
Cojones?
Yes.
Fricki?
Yes.
Nichols?
Yes.
Stevens?
Yes.
Tim? Seven yes, one absent.
Okay, motion passes. So members of the public will speak for a period of two and a half hours of speaking time and limited to two minutes for each speaker. I will announce the names of the next eight speakers, so they are prepared to come forward. Katie McClemmons. Dr. Sue Greenwald, please come up. Please, quickly. Jason Martinez. Janice Van Winkle. Chad Galepsy. Gil, Galepsy. I think I slaughtered that name. I apologize. Angela Monteroso, I probably did not pronounce that correctly either. Julie Hofer. And Beth Velecky? I hope I didn't slaughter it too much. Okay. You will be called in the order that I read your name, so be prepared. Katie McClemmons.
Maureen, before Katie starts, I just want to remind folks, so Patty Cojones will actually hold up a one-minute sign and then a stop sign, as I think you saw before. Just try to be attentive to that, not trying to interrupt you, and two minutes goes quickly, obviously. We are just going to try to make sure that we can hear everyone that's signed up, as the Board stated, so thank you for your patience, and we'll get that done. And so I'll go ahead and turn it back over to Maureen.
All right. Welcome, Katie.
Thank you. Good morning, Board. My name is Katie McClemmons. I am a parent and educator, and today I represent Protect Nebraska Children, a growing coalition of nearly 11,000 concerned individuals and organizations throughout our state comprised of parents, grandparents, teachers, lawyers, medical and mental health professionals, youth, legislators, religious leaders, and other concerned citizens. I am providing public comment today in opposition to draft one of the proposed health standards, which include comprehensive sexuality education and the controversial and divisive political ideology of critical race theory. Before this coalition was formed, a petition circulated around our state garnering nearly 4,000 signatures opposing the components of CSE and CRT, which are within these standards. Shortly after the State Board of Education meeting on April 2nd, we formed a grassroots effort in response to Draft One, and thus this coalition. Our mission is to protect the health and innocence of children and the fundamental rights of parents to direct the education, healthcare, and upbringing of their children. Our objectives include the following: to advocate for laws and policies that will protect children and parents and their fundamental rights; to expose the harmful nature of CSE, gender ideology, and pornographic materials, and prevent any such materials, programs, or ideologies from being incorporated in our schools; and to inform and mobilize our members and all concerned citizens. On behalf of the thousands of members of the Protect Nebraska Children Coalition, we affirm that the current Nebraska Health Education Framework is age-appropriate and medically accurate, and question the decision to replace it. We ask you each to refrain from adopting the proposed standards that will lead to the implementation of controversial CSE and CRT in our schools. We know that this would lead to great division in our state because we see the results of such implementation throughout our country and the world. We do not want this for Nebraska, and we do not want this for our children. Finally, I will submit these comments, as well as a document, which clearly outlines which standards must be removed in order for the proposed health standards to be acceptable. Thank you.
Thank you, Katie. We ask that there be no clapping after these. Dr. Sue Greenwald, welcome, Sue. Welcome, Dr. Greenwald.
Good morning. My name is Dr. Susan Greenwald. I'm a pediatrician from Carney. I represent 11,000 members of the Protect Nebraska Children Coalition. I have 35 years of experience treating children who have been sexually abused and testifying in court as an expert witness. In that capacity, I have taught jurors to understand the process of grooming a child to accept the advances of a predator. Language and graphic materials are used by pedophiles to desensitize the child to sexual acts. Children are susceptible because they have natural curiosity, they trust the adult, and they can be trained to be sexual beings. That explains why sexual abuse often persists for years before it is discovered. Statistically, in a classroom of 25, there will be one or two children who have been sexually abused or are being sexually abused. The CSE curriculum, with its emphasis from early elementary school on sexual rights and sexual pleasure, is a pedophile's dream curriculum. A first grader can explain how masturbation works. A second grader can point out that the clitoris is for sexual pleasure. A fourth grader can demonstrate how intercourse works, in case someone wants to try it with them. A fifth grader can explain how to consent to sexual activity. Imagine how confusing it must be for that little girl who is being molested at home. She knows it hurts, and she wants it to stop, but her teacher explained that it is normal, and there must be something wrong with her. Imagine how much longer it might take for her to report the abuse when she thinks that she's the bad one. Imagine how much physical and psychological damage is taking place. Also, the lessons for ages 14 and up use role-play, instructing the teacher to divide students into couples. Imagine that you were a 15-year-old who has to role-play consenting to sex with a member of the opposite sex. Maybe the boy likes the girl, maybe the boy has bullied the girl, but whatever their history, it has to be a mortifying experience for both of them. However, it will teach them that sexual experimentation is encouraged. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Greenwald.
Please, no applause. And I appreciate your willingness to, or wanting to engage, but it's best that you don't, it just simply slows us down, so thank you.
Jason Martinez, welcome.
Good morning. My name is Jason Martinez. I'm a father and a nurse anesthetist in Carney. I represent the members of the PNCC. Our coalition of members have concern and opposition regarding the process the NDE used to decide what standards were part of Draft One. While we appreciate local educators were part of the draft process, we know outside influences contributed objectionable portions of the draft. For example, upon review, the national sex ed standards heavily influenced human growth and development content within the draft. Many of the standards were worded in a similar manner, and it was even more revealing when comparing the grade ranges in national standards to the breakdown of grades in our standards. Many of the variable, oh, excuse me, comparable verbiage actually showed up in lower grades than proposed Nebraska standards, thus exposing children to developmentally inappropriate content sooner. Who published these standards? They were published by the Future of Sex Education Initiative, a partnership between Advocates for Youth, ANZER, and SECCAS. All three of these organizations are intricately intertwined with Planned Parenthood, and these standards contain the most radical views available on children and sexuality. The second edition has been, quote, "infused with principles of reproductive justice, racial justice, social justice, and equity," page eight, end quote, and calls for significant discussions on race, privilege, power, systemic racism, and homophobia. These updated standards include significant changes as new topics of consent, sexual orientation, and gender identity. They are endorsed by the Gay, Lesbian, and Straight Education Network and Gender Spectrum, among others. There is an obvious conflict of interest when entities that profit from sexualization, sexualizing children, are involved in creating or implementing sex education programs. The entire draft development has been neither balanced or transparent, and we are asking you to scrap the entire draft and provide us with one that is. Thank you for your time.
Chair. Maureen. 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 Can I ask just one point of clarification? Sir, when you mentioned page eight, I was just trying to see what page eight. I don't, I don't think I picked up exactly, just so that I, I'm kind of trying to look at what people are.
That would be on the second draft of the National Sex Education Standards.
Okay. Thank you.
Janice Van Winkle? Welcome, Janice.
Thank you. My name is Janice Van Winkle. I am from Carney. My husband is an elementary teacher, and we have six children. I represent the nearly 11,000 members of Protect Nebraska Children Coalition, and I am providing public comment in opposition to draft one of the proposed health standards, which includes comprehensive sexuality education and the controversial political ideology of critical race theory. To illustrate why enacting the controversial health standards will only create more contention, I ask you to look around this room and think about all who are waiting outside to speak. We believe everyone here has the best interest of Nebraska's children in mind. But each person here will have a different opinion, and probably a very strong opinion, on what is appropriate to teach children about sex and at what age. I ask everyone present, people representing all segments of our population, what do you think is appropriate sex education? Where do you draw the line? The topics addressed and illustrated in the curricula that would meet these proposed health standards is highly explicit and promotes promiscuity and high-risk sexual behaviors to children as healthy and normal. This begs the question, does the- To illustrate why enacting the controversial health standards will only create more contention, I ask you to look around this room and think about all who are waiting outside to speak. We believe everyone here has the best interests of Nebraska's children in mind. But each person here will have a different opinion, and probably a very strong opinion, on what is appropriate to teach children about sex and at what age. I ask everyone present, people representing all segments of our population, what do you think is appropriate sex education? Where do you draw the line? The topics addressed and illustrated in the curricula that would meet these proposed health standards is highly explicit and promotes promiscuity and high-risk sexual behaviors to children as healthy and normal. This begs the question, does the government know best what children should be taught on all of these issues? How does the role and rights of parents fit? If there were 100 people in this room, there may be 100 different opinions on what children should be taught when it comes to controversial issues. Comprehensive sexuality education, or CSE, is not traditional sex education. CSE programs have an almost obsessive focus on teaching children how to obtain sexual pleasures in various ways. Yet ironically, CSE programs are anything but comprehensive, as they fail to teach children about all the emotional, psychological, and physical health risks of promiscuous sexual activity. The ultimate goal of CSE is to change the sexual and gender norms of society, which is why CSE could be more accurately called abortion, promiscuity, and LGBT rights education. CSE is a rights-based approach to sex education and promotes sexual rights to children at the expense of their sexual health. This type of education harms children and has no place in our state standards. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Janice. Pronounce your last name for me.
Gillespie.
Gillespie.
Thank you. Yeah, my name is Chad Gillespie, and I'm from Carney, Nebraska. I represent the nearly 11,000 members of the Protect Nebraska Children Coalition, and I'm providing public comment in opposition to draft one of the proposed health standards, which includes comprehensive sexuality education. There are multiple false philosophies that comprehensive sexuality programs are based upon. Those include: children are naturally sexual from birth, therefore, any restrictions on their sexual expression or sexual activity violates their sexual rights. To have good health, children and adults should be having regular sexual experiences, either alone, masturbation, or with persons of either gender. A right to sexual pleasure, even at the youngest ages, is a primary human right that trumps other rights. Children have privacy and confidentiality rights that trump the rights of their parents to guide their education in the area of human sexuality. Children have a right to abortion and other sexual services and commodities into sexual relations without the knowledge and consent of their parents. Most societal, sexual, and gender norms, especially those based in religious beliefs, are repressive and unhealthy and should be changed. Children have the right to experiment with diverse sexual identities and orientations and the behaviors associated with them in order to develop a healthy sexuality. Youth are to be enlisted to combat homophobia, transphobia, and heterosexism, and to advocate for their sexual rights. Children, under internationally recognized rights to health and education, have a right to all sexual information uncensored and without parental consent. I hope the information provided today will lead this board to eliminate these controversial standards. Nebraska's children deserve the best chance at a healthy future, and any introduction of CSE will harm children, like my five little boys. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Chad. Angela Montero So. Welcome, Angela.
Thank you. I am actually from Shelton, Nebraska, and I also represent the PNCC. And I'm providing comment in opposition to draft one. Today, I want you to consider the makeup of an average classroom of elementary students in Nebraska public school, the type of children that might be found in such a classroom. Some of them are sexually innocent, but some of them are not. Some of them are already experienced and are aware of their changing bodies, but tragically, some have been sexually abused. Others, and obviously, some have been exposed to pornography. They're addicted already. Some are going to be traumatized and hypersensitive to sexual issues. And these children also come from a wide range of cultural backgrounds and religious backgrounds. Parents are intricately involved. They have recognized rights, duties, and responsibilities to educate and protect their children. How can it be possible to implement CSE with elements of CRT so that it will be acceptable to a majority of parents? Students are at all different stages of sexual development. How can you tailor the information to prevent giving too much too soon? And once a child has been introduced and exposed to some of the explicit content and graphic images, it can't be undone. So by including CSE in draft one, we're putting the health and safety of our children at great risk. Evidence shows, high sexual activity is a risk factor for adolescent health. Teens who are sexually active have greater rates of emotional problems and depression. There's evidence that early sexual debut leads to higher likelihood of unstable relationships and eventual marital failure. Adolescent sexual activity itself is an independent risk factor for developing low self-esteem, major depression, suicidal attempts. Research also shows that when teens have sex, there's a higher risk of negative life outcomes. So we can't accept draft one as written. We must protect our children. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Angela. Julie Hofer. Welcome, Julie.
Thank you. Welcome. My name is Julie Hofer. I'm a parent and educator from Carney, Nebraska. I represent the nearly 11,000-plus members of the Protect Nebraska Children Coalition, and I'm providing public comment in opposition to draft one of the proposed health standards. These standards and corresponding CSE curricula normalize child sex and desensitize children to sexual things. In fact, CSE is a highly controversial, rights-based approach to sex education that is more than just teaching children and youth about sexual intercourse and human reproduction. Sex ed focuses on the human reproductive system and helps youth understand the changes their bodies experience during puberty. Sex ed programs often include contraceptive or abstinence instruction. In contrast, CSE is drastically different. Although CSE instruction will include most of what is covered by sex ed programs, it typically does not include abstinence education in any depth and uses graphic materials and visuals. CSE promotes sexual rights to children at the expense of their sexual health. CSE programs also seek to change society by changing sexual and gender norms and teaching youth to advocate for their sexual rights. Most CSE programs promote acceptance of diverse sexual identities and orientations and enlist youth in combating homophobia and heterosexism. These CSE programs have an obsessive focus on sexual pleasure, instructing children at the earliest ages on how to obtain sexual pleasure in a variety of ways. Some programs even encourage sexual exploration for children as young as age five. Planned Parenthood, one of the largest purveyors of sexuality education in the United States, explains on their website that such education addresses "values exploration, safer sex, sexual attitudes and values, sexual orientation, and sexual pleasure." Consider this quote from the World Health Organization: "Give information about enjoyment and pleasure when touching one's own body, early childhood masturbation." This instruction is designed for teaching children ages zero to four. This material is harmful for our children and must not be included in the state health standards. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Julie.
Hello. My name is Beth Vilekka. I am a parent and educator from Carney. I'm the mother of 11 and the grandmother of 27. I represent the almost 11,000 members of the Protect Nebraska Children Coalition, and I am providing public comment in opposition to draft one of the proposed health standards, which include comprehensive sexuality education, CSE, and the controversial political ideology of critical race theory. I am concerned for the children of our state who suffer, who currently suffer from sexual abuse or abuse in their past. The proposed health standards and the correlating CSE curricula readily teach children about choice regarding sexual engagement. This may at first sound positive until one considers the rationale of many elementary children, especially those under the manipulation of an abuser. A young student might believe that any abusive behavior perpetrated on them isn't actually wrong, unless they verbally say, "No." Lessons for CSE also teach students they can choose to have sex when they feel they are ready, or when they find a trusted partner. These lessons are far from comprehensive, as they fail to provide data about the well-documented negative consequences of early sexual debut. They also fail to encourage sexually active children to return to abstinence. Research has long established that premature sexual exposure leads to children becoming sexually active at an earlier age. These young people are also more likely to have a higher number of casual sexual relations, leading to a greater number of STIs and teen pregnancies, a higher rate of depression and anxiety, and a greater propensity for suicidal behavior. This is not the future Nebraskans want for their children. We must stand against the organizations and entities that promote early sexualization of our children, and stand for the right of every child to have a childhood. Thank you for your time and service. I appreciate the opportunity to speak.
The next eight people would be Robin Phipps, Kelly Kinnison, Lee Spencer, Karen Lind, Judy Durr, Amy Martinez, Mike Meyer, and Peggy Fong.
Madam President.
Lisa.
May I speak?
Yes.
Okay. I wanted to hear, as I stated earlier, I would like to hear from every single person. We decided that we would do two and a half hours. Every time, I just waited and listened, and the clapping's getting louder, which is taking up seconds, which is taking away minutes from the two and a half hours. I really, truly want to hear from every single person who signed up. So if you wouldn't mind, I see people going like this. That would be probably appropriate. But I want to hear from everybody.
Thank you, Lisa. Point well taken.
Can I add one point of clarification? I believe the motion's going to allow 75 people to go, but it does slow us down, right? We'll be here longer if we keep doing that. So that's all I ask.
You're wasting time!
I do have the authority to end public comment. As we expect our students in our classroom to follow instructions, we, as a state board, have asked already numerous times to follow instructions. Thank you. I hope this is the last time. Robin, quickly. Come on up, Robin. Be ready to go. Robin?
I just want to support what my colleagues just gave.
Mike, please.
It's on. I want to support what my colleagues just gave.
Robin Phipps. Welcome, Robin.
Thank you. I'm Robin Phipps, mother of four, grandmother of 12, and I represent the 11,000-plus members of the Protect Nebraska Children Coalition. I'm providing public comment in opposition to draft one of the proposed health standards, which includes comprehensive sexuality education and the very controversial political ideology of critical race theory. For children who've been sexually abused by a member of the opposite sex, discussing sexual matters in a mixed setting can be an intense emotional trigger. A number of CSE programs require children to be instructed in sexual matters in a mixed setting in order to, among other things, desensitize them from sexual concepts and facilitate role-playing where boys and girls have sex or seduce each other. Consider this excerpt from the popular curriculum published by Advocates for Youth partnering with Planned Parenthood entitled "Rights, Respect, Responsibilities" for 10th graders. Divide the class into pairs, and for the purpose of the activity, I'm going to ask you to pretend you're in a romantic and sexual relationship. Grade 10, Lesson 4, Page 3. Another role-playing scenario for 10th grade: You think you know what person 2 wants. That's the way the relationship's always been. So you're going to let them know that tonight's the night. You're going to have sex together for the first time. Grade 10, Lesson 1, Page 5. These types of role-playing are a trigger for someone who's been sexually abused. It can also be incredibly embarrassing for all students and encourages sexual experimentation among teens. May I remind you, this curriculum is for 15-year-olds, which in the state of Nebraska is younger than the legal age of consent. This curriculum is not age-appropriate. Thank you.
Thank you, Robin.
Welcome, Kelly.
Thank you. My name is Kelly Kinnison. I'm an engineer, mother of four, and an educator here in Carney. And I represent the nearly 11,000 members of the Protect Nebraska Children Coalition, and I am providing public comment in opposition to draft one of the proposed health standards. These draft one health standards and the CSE curricula that will fulfill these proposed standards will present abortion as a safe or positive option while omitting data on the many negative physical and mental health consequences. Our Nebraska children will be taught they have a right to abortion and will be referred to abortion providers for information deemed medically accurate. This would include sites like Planned Parenthood or their affiliates and partners, which also provide lucrative services and commodities, such as sexual counseling, condoms, other forms of contraceptives, gender hormones in some states, STIs testing and treatment, and of course, abortions. There is an obvious conflict of interest when an entity that profits from sexualizing children is involved in creating or implementing CSE programs. For more information on how Planned Parenthood sexualizes children for profit, see www-waronchildren.org and wwwinvestigateippf.org. State legislatures in other states, such as Washington, Oregon, and California, have passed standards similar in content to the Nebraska draft one standards. Now, school-based counselors can direct students to and help schedule transgender surgeries or abortions, in some cases, without the knowledge or permission of the parents. They also encourage the use of contraceptives and dispense them through school-based clinics, again, without the express permission of parents. Parents hold the ultimate authority and have the rights, duties, and responsibilities to guide and protect our children. Implementing standards which include CSE will harm our children. Thank you for this opportunity.
Thank you, Kelly. Welcome, Lee.
Good morning. I am an RN of over 50 years, and I have spent several years working on a child-adolescent unit, where we took care of children from the ages of 3 to 18. Most of these children came to us, they were extremely violent in behavior. Some of the most violent children that we took care of had been sexually either abused or had been exposed to inappropriate sexual materials. Frequently, this will lead to violence, self-destructive behavior, violence against society, and drug use. I represent nearly 11,000 members of the Protect Nebraska Children Coalition, and I am providing public comment in opposition to draft one of the proposed health standards. CSE fails to establish abstinence or a return to abstinence as the expected standard for all age, school-aged children. While some curriculum lessons may mention abstinence in passing, the clear and apparent message is that all sexual activity, unless unprotected, is acceptable and even healthy. According to the theory of risk compensation, individuals will adjust their behaviors according to the theory of risk compensation. Individuals will adjust their behaviors according to their perception of risk. If one feels more protected, they will be more willing to engage in risky behaviors. CSE curricula is consistently misleading, as it promotes a risk reduction rather than a risk avoidance. We must support abstinence as the standard of behavior for our children, which leads to respect for themselves and for others.
Time. Thank you, Lee. Lee, because you had documents to turn to the board, they will receive the rest of your comments, as all that handed in. Thank you. Karen Lind.
My name is Karen Lind, and I am from Carney, Nebraska. I represent the nearly 11,000 members of the Protect Nebraska Children's Coalition, and I'm providing public comment in opposition to draft one of the proposed health standards. In reviewing the framework used to guide Nebraska sex education programs over the past decade, it becomes clear that these proposed health standards represent a major shift from the medically accurate, age-appropriate framework to standards based on politically motivated, partisan agendas that result in age-inappropriateness, where childhood indoctrination is the vehicle for radical social change. According to the Sexuality Information and Education Council of the United States, this is a primary goal in implementing CSE. Planned Parenthood is also an avid supporter of CSE, producing many supporting curricula and programs. Considering Planned Parenthood benefits financially from sexually active teens, it is unethical that such an organization is involved in the promotion of school sexuality education. In 2009, the state of Oregon implemented CSE. In contrast, Nebraska has had an official health education framework that promotes abstinence and return to abstinence since 1997. When you compare the data in Oregon and Nebraska from youth risk surveys between 2010 and 2020, Oregon high school youth are consistently and substantially more sexually active. From this and other research, we can see that Nebraska's current framework for health education is more effective at reducing risky sexual behavior in students than the CSE standards implemented in Oregon. I would like to remind the board and all who are listening that CSE is not sex ed. Sex ed is the exclamation of normal physical development and basic biological sexual reproduction. CSE is a highly controversial, rights-based organ approach to sex education that exposes children to explicit sexual material at an early age. All standards that lead to this harmful ideology must be removed from Draft 1. Thank you.
Thank you, Karen. Judy Durr. Welcome, Judy.
Good morning. I'm Judy Durr Amherst, educator with a master's in clinical mental health. I represent the nearly 11,000 members of the Protect Nebraska Children's Coalition. I am providing public comment in opposition to draft one of the proposed health standards. CSE consistently contains directions on how to negotiate sexual encounters or how to ask for or get consent from other children to engage in sexual acts with them. For example, in the Rights, Respect, and Responsibility Curriculum, the following is from an 8th grade lesson, and I quote, "Mutual consent is essential in any relationship. It's when both people actively say what they want and both people agree to any behavior that they are going to do together. And when we are talking about doing something sexual in nature, you need to ask your partner if they want to do it." End quote, Grade 8, Lesson 7, Page 5. Another role-play scenario from the same curriculum. Quote, "You may think that you know what person 2 wants. That's the way your relationship has always been. You're more outgoing, they're more quiet and reserved, and they expect you to take charge and to make decisions. That's how it is from where you're from. So you're going to let them know that tonight is the night. You're going to have sex together for the first time." End quote, Grade 10, Lesson 1, Page 5. In Nebraska, the age of consensual sexual consent is 16. Teaching a child younger than 16 how to give and request sexual consent is beyond the boundaries set by law. The idea of consent and protecting oneself from unwanted actions can be taught outside of a sexual context. This should be the goal as we strive to teach our students how to care for others and value their own dignity and their own self-worth. I thank you for your time. I thank you for your consideration and for your service, and I appreciate the opportunity to speak.
Jacquelyn? Point of clarification?
Yes, please. I keep hearing quotes about the CSE and people's testimony. Can you, those aren't in the standards that I've seen, so can you point me to the source or what you're reading?
These would be examples that would satisfy the proposed standards, and so those are samples out of curriculum. I don't have that in front of me, but I could certainly get it for you if you wanted.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you, Judy.
Could I ask another point of clarification?
Did I miss somebody? Go ahead.
Are you, you're not suggesting that the curriculum and the lessons that you're giving examples of are part of our standards. Is that correct?
I'm suggesting that those would satisfy any proposed standards, should they be adopted, that would satisfy those kinds of proposals. Does that make sense? Does that, okay, thank you.
Thank you, Judy.
Thank you.
Amy Martinez. Welcome, Amy.
My name is Amy Martinez. I'm a mother and also a physician assistant from Carney, Nebraska. I also represent members of the Protect Nebraska Children Coalition in giving public comment in opposition to the proposed health standards, which include comprehensive sexuality education and the controversial political ideology of critical race theory. I'd like to share to you today a few examples of how CSE teaches children to consent before they are legally able to do so. Two examples can be found in the It's All One curriculum, which is a premier CSE program. It's used currently in more than 150 countries and in every state in the United States. It's All One is promoted by United Nations agencies. It is a model for other CSE programs. The target audience is for ages 15 and up. However, there are adaptation suggestions for children as young as 10. Examples are as follow, and I quote, "Today, we will begin looking at what it means to give truly free and informed consent in a situation involving sex." Volume 2, Page 76. And another, "Plan time to discuss sexual consent in a meaningful way. Many young people feel ambivalent about what they want or confused about their partner's wishes. Explore ways to ensure mutual consent." Volume 1, Page 81. In today's society, consent is often taught under the banner of sexual abuse prevention. While this may be appropriate for adults to apply such concepts to sexual encounters, children of minor age should never be encouraged to consent to sex or be taught how to negotiate sexual encounters. Consent can be taught in an effective manner without a sexual focus. Thanks for your time, and I appreciate your opportunity.
Thank you, Amy. Clarification from board? Mike Meyer. Welcome, Mike.
Thank you. My name is Mike Meyer. I'm an insurance agent from Carney, Nebraska, father of three, grand buddy of two, and a very concerned citizen. A direct quote from this curriculum for ages 10 to 14-year-olds, page 48. "Masturbation, boys and girls, teenagers and grownups too, experience sexy feelings when they masturbate. Some people think masturbation is wrong or harmful. Some religions call masturbation a sin, but masturbation cannot hurt you. If there's a contradiction to religion like that, can it come from any other place than religion itself? I'm sorry, but that reads more like someone wearing a trench coat around the corner from the school playground would tell a child where they were grooming them rather than from a school paid for by my tax dollars. The school's job is to prepare a child to best be a productive adult, not to contradict parental values and with religious, excuse me, with religious perversions directly from the pit of hell. Again, some people think it's wrong or harmful. Some religions call masturbation a sin. Masturbation cannot hurt you." I'm sorry, that's crazy. In the 1700s, primary schools taught Greek and Latin. Primary schools. Today, we teach remedial English in high school to ingratuate illiterate students. Maybe we should attempt to teach the basics to consider such, before we consider such massive swerve into the ditch of immorality as this would be. Shame on you for even considering this. When my children were little, they would occasionally ask dumb things, as children do. I dismissed their requests. I've never eaten a mud pie. Some, look, someone in charge doesn't give a three-year-old boy a loaded pistol to play with, hand him the keys to the family car and wish him luck. That would be criminal, and when somebody gets hurt, those in charge should expect to go to jail. Luke 17:2 reads, "It would be better for him to have a millstone hung around his neck and thrown into the sea than cause one of these little ones to stumble."
Time, thank you, Mike.
You're in charge.
Thank you. Peggy Fong? Peggy? Welcome, Peggy.
Thank you for your time. The State Board of Education should not allow the presentation of any of this material in our classrooms. It is harmful information both to children and our society. This board also needs to explain to their voters why they believe this material is the best they can offer and why they believe our children should be held to Planned Parenthood's idea of standards. Not only did the National Director of Education Planned Parenthood Federation of America contribute to and review these standards nationally, but many of the organizations endorsing these standards are also funded by Planned Parenthood. Planned Parenthood is the enemy of our children, and because they seek to do harm to children, they should be disqualified from contributing to the children's education. What you are promoting as educational standards would desensitize children to all things sexual. This material would leave children vulnerable to sex crimes and human sex traffickers. In the adult workplace, it is considered sexual harassment to speak about sexual things. People can lose their jobs over less than what you are proposing as the educational standard for all grades K through 12. Let me remind the board that you are all elected officials. You are here because good citizens had faith that you would present appropriate materials for the education of our children, and I respectfully yield the rest of my time to those who need it.
Thank you, Peggy. The next eight, the next eight speakers, Jenna Durr, Justin Teal, Ryan Brunna, Dr. Anna Peterson, Tim Stratton, Lynn Zaleski, Jo Springer, and Reverend Chris Jorgensen. Jenna.
My name is Jenna Durr, and I'm a family medicine physician from Carney. I represent the nearly 11,000 members of the Protect Nebraska Children Coalition. Comprehensive sexuality education is not traditional sex education. What most of us think about when we hear sex ed would be education that focuses on the human reproductive system and helps young people understand the changes their bodies experience during puberty. In contrast, CSE is a rights-based approach to sexuality education and promotes these rights at the expense of children's own health. CSE intentionally focuses on risk reduction rather than risk avoidance. It also seeks to normalize all sexual behaviors and often fails to identify high-risk behavior as such. Curricula may also omit or downplay pertinent medical facts related to the extremely high rates of sexually transmitted infections and the associated risks of oral and anal cancers. Directly from the Centers of Disease and Control Prevention website, the human papillomavirus, or HPV, is thought to be responsible for more than 90% of anal and cervical cancers, about 70% of vaginal and vulvar cancers, and more than 60% of penile cancers. Oral faringial cancers traditionally have been caused by tobacco and alcohol, but recent studies show about 70% of cancers of the oral ferings may be linked to HPV. Family health and sexual, or family life and sexual health, or FLAS, is a curricular example which would fulfill some of the proposed standards in Draft 1. This is example from a lesson, and I quote, "In this 5th and 6th grade lesson, we use the term 'sexual intercourse' as an umbrella expression to represent all three risky sexual behaviors, oral, anal, and vaginal intercourse. These will be spelled out in later grades. That's not to say you can't define them simply if students ask about them. The curriculum, however, begins with this more basic information." End quote. Of note, while at least oral and anal intercourse are listed as risky, some 10 and 11-year-olds do not know about anal or oral sex, so this lesson will introduce them to high-risk sexual behaviors. It also equates anal and oral intercourse with vaginal intercourse, thus normalizing these sex acts to children as young as 10. Thank you for your time and service, and I appreciate the opportunity to speak today.
Thank you, Jenna. Justin Teal. Welcome, Justin.
Thank you. Just real quick, before my time starts, I'd just like to say to for those who are out there that think that their defiance and applause is more important than our public comment, I would recommend some self-reflection. I'm a father of three girls from St. LaBoree. I represent the nearly 11,000 members of the PNCC. Our coalition would like each board member to have a copy of the book, Irreversible Damage by Abigail Schreier, which is in front of you. I will be submitting these copies along with my written testimony today. This book is fact-based, balanced, and fair. It addresses social contagion and the affirmation of gender dysphoria. Gender dysphoria, formerly known as gender identity disorder, typically manifests around 2 to 4 years of age and persists through adolescence. Historically, it afflicted roughly 0.01% of the population and almost exclusively boys. In fact, before 2012, there was no scientific literature on girls ages 11 to 21 ever having developed gender dysphoria. However, over the last decade, there has been a significant increase in adolescents claiming to have gender dysphoria and identifying as transgender. Now, for the first time in medical history, teenage girls are the majority. Between 2016 and 17, the number of gender surgeries for teenage females in the U.S. quadrupled, with biological women specifically accounting for 70% of all gender surgeries. With such a dramatic shift in norms, one might ask why? Why has there been such a dramatic change in the demographic? The answer lies in the concept of affirmation therapy. Non-affirmative psychotherapist Lisa Marchiano says, "The whole premise of therapy is that you explore. You open things up and you approach a symptom with curiosity. Affirmation is the exact opposite of curiosity. It's saying, I already know what this is. It's taking things at face value." A child may come into a therapy session declaring themselves to be trans. Simply agreeing with this without exploration and discussion is not therapy. Affirmation therapy has contributed to the growing numbers of children who claim gender dysphoria. Children are naturally developing the awareness of their gender, either male or female, around ages 3 to 4. Gender constancy, knowing that a gender is unchanging, starts around age 7. Introducing such concepts of gender identity and gender fluidity to children as young as kindergarten will cause irreversible damage. Once children are introduced to certain topics, this cannot be undone. See you next month.
Thank you, Justin. Ryan? Welcome, Ryan.
Thank you. I ask that you would please respect the board and not clap. As Justin said before, we need to respect them, and your self-defiance isn't helping anything. So, thank you. I hope that doesn't count against my time.
Madam Chair.
Robin?
May I thank Ryan? Thank you very much.
My name is Ryan Brunna, and I am from Carney, Nebraska, and a soon-to-be father. I represent the nearly 11,000 members of the PNCC. When expressing concern regarding the proposed health standards, we are often told that the standards were developed by medical and health experts, that the science was followed. However, science is never settled, and research is not one-sided. Dr. Kenneth Zucker, an American-Canadian psychologist, oversaw development of the definition of gender dysphoria for the DSM-5 and helped write the guidelines for the World Professional Association for Transgender Health. He has treated over 500 children with gender dysphoria, and in the vast majority of cases, therapy focused on reducing the psychopathology within the entire family resulted in the child's acceptance of their birth sex. In 2014, Dr. Paul McHugh, John Hopkins University distinguished professor of psychiatry and behavioral sciences, said, quote, "Policymakers and the media are doing no favors to the public or the transgendered by treating their confusions as a right in need of defending rather than as a mental disorder that deserves understanding, treatment, and prevention." He states, "The current transgender craze is encouraged and improperly treated by a psychiatry profession overtaken by fad and primarily induced by peers, media, and school education." Last month, one of the board education members asked, quote, "Should we be basing our education on values and not on what the evidence and the facts and what the medical professionals are saying?" End quote. "The concerns that nearly 11,000 of us share as part of our coalition are not based on values or feelings alone. Introduction to transgender and gender identity or fluidity concepts is harmful to children. There is abundant data, science, research, and expertise from countless medical professionals that show implementation of CSE, which includes an emphasis on transgender and other gender identities, is harmful to children." Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Ryan. I have a point of clarification. It's in your second paragraph.
Dr. Kenneth Zucker?
No, DSM-5. What does that stand for?
That is the, basically the handbook for identifying different behavior and mental issues.
Okay. All right, thank you. Any other clarification? Thank you, Ryan. Dr. Anna Peterson. Welcome.
Thank you. I am a former public school educator, a counselor, a wellness coordinator, a mother of four, and a grandmother of 18. I'm a resident of the Carney area and also represent the Protect Nebraska Children Coalition. I am giving public opposition comments to this Draft 1, and I want to look at the controversial political ideology of critical race theory. CRT is the theory behind wokeism and cancel culture and encourages a cynical view of the founding and history of the United States. This viewing of our history includes abduction in slavery, genocide, displacement, and annexation of different groups of people, private property, and land, without including the whole story, truth, and facts. Our history, yes, does include steps and missteps, villains and heroes, but over the course of the past 300 years, the result has been a move to more liberty for more people. There is nowhere on earth to go where freedom is more abundant than the United States. In CRT, victimhood is encouraged. Individuals indoctrinated by this ideology do not develop healthy independence and success. Anxiety, depression, and suicide rates are rising in these insecurities. Students that are indoctrinated into this worldview are taught that their skin color defines their identity, and it is something they cannot escape. CRT promotes synthetic racism, intense conflict between the power systems of different races of people institutionally and socially. America was founded on the idea of individuals having the right to life, liberty, and the pursuit of happiness. This does not coincide with the CRT values. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Anna. Jacquelyn?
Just one question for you. I've received emails and phone calls about CRT. Did you see, did you see that phrase? Or are you concerned that critical race theory is in the standards? Or is that phrase or term in those standards? or is that phrase or term in those standards? Like...
It is included in the standards as far as identity is between colored people and whites. We're talking about prejudice? Yeah, okay, thank you.
Tim Stratton. Thank you, Anna.
My name is Dr. Tim Stratton. I represent over 10,000 members of the Protect Nebraska Children Coalition, and I stand in opposition to Draft One of the proposed health standards, which include CSE and the political ideology of critical race theory, abbreviated CRT. Now CRT is promoted with descriptions of anti-racism, diversity, equity, and inclusion, and that sounds great, but in reality, CRT is completely opposite. CRT is sold as ethnically responsive teaching. However, the very roots of CRT are racist, repressive, discriminatory, and divisive. CRT is heavily influenced by hate-mongers such as Karl Marx and Vladimir Lenin. The main dogmas of CRT are as follows: You are not a free or responsible individual. You are only the color of your skin, and by your level of pigment, you will be judged. According to CRT, all blacks are oppressed and all whites are racist oppressors. If a white person disagrees and won't admit her racism, well, then that proves her guilt and provides evidence of systemic race system. This heads I win, tails you lose approach is simply unreasonable, illogical, and irrational, the same circular reasoning wielded in the Salem witch trials. CRT seeks to destroy the philosophical foundations of America, that all men are created equal, that they are endowed by their Creator with certain unalienable rights. These are objective and unalienable rights that man or government ought not violate, no matter how much pigment one has in their epidermis. As James Lindsay notes, according to CRT, Martin Luther King was both wrong and naive. White Americans can never judge blacks by the content of their character. They can only judge them by the color of their skin. You are either for Martin Luther King, or you are against him. I stand with Martin Luther King. I encourage Nebraska schools to stand with Martin Luther King, so oppose critical race theory. Thank you.
Thank you, Tim. Robin, you have a point of clarification?
Thank you for the crew here who got me situated appropriately with my speaker. Thank you, guys. I'm going to follow up on a question here that Jaclyn brought forth through the previous person. I'm just really struggling with CRT and how it relates to our health standards. That really is either I'm incapable of thinking in that way, or I'm just not getting it.
I'm with you 100%. It shouldn't be included. As I skimmed the material, it seemed to me that, was it around seventh grade, eighth grade, critical race theory seems to be weaving its way into the curriculum, and you're right. I agree with you 100%. It has no place in these health standards, so I thank you for recognizing that.
Deborah?
If I can help...
Hold on, hold on.
Make sure I'm getting my question. You're saying CRT is in the first draft?
Yes.
Okay, you are saying that.
I am saying that, yes.
And again, explain to me where that is.
I would point you to, I was thinking it was seventh grade, but my colleagues are saying it's eighth grade, so I would point you to that part of the curriculum.
Could you...
I can't quote you anything off the top of my head right now, but I can get you that information if you'd like me to later.
Absolutely.
All right, I'd be happy to.
And I'd like to allow Deborah to follow up on that.
Well, I guess I had the same question for you. I keep hearing CSE and CRT, and our standards don't have, are not comprehensive sex education, and we are not, I mean, the concept of critical race theory is not, I mean, those are political terms, and we're talking about education concepts, and ours are different than CSE, and I guess some of the discussion about race is already in our social studies standards.
Deborah, is this a point of clarification to Mr. Stratton?
Sorry, yes. I guess the same, I guess I am, as people talk about those, and if you can refer as to how these are specific to CSE and CRT, that would be helpful, because I didn't see them in the standards.
Well, I would encourage you to look at it more closely. Obviously, since there's so many people here that have seen it, I would encourage you to look at it more closely. But yes, around that seventh or eighth grade point of the curriculum, CRT weaves its way in, and it does, I agree with both of you. It should not be a part of CSE.
And I do understand you're going to get me...
Yes, sir. You bet. Thank you. And I would just want to reiterate, we want them to respect us. Please, let's respect them. If we want them to hear us, we have to hear them. So let's please be respectful and hold our applause from here on out.
Thank you.
Thank you, Tim. Lynn Zaleski. Welcome, Lynn.
Thank you. A little shorter. I'm Lynn Zaleski. I was a mental health therapist prior to becoming a parent, and I've worked in public education for many years. I'm from Hastings and represented by Deborah. Thank you to the professionals who developed these standards. As public schools, our focus should always be on factual information and the emotional health of our students. Children need to learn about our planet's amazing biodiversity, its variety of reproductive ways, and that human beings are part of nature. They need to learn that no matter how they identify or who they love, they are a valued part of our society. People need to learn healthy expressions of our emotions, too. As physical and sexual abuse can too often start in a child's life early, it's important to ensure our students are taught the language of body parts and the difference between appropriate and inappropriate touching. Not knowing these names or what's inappropriate does not prevent sexual and physical abuse occurring. Rather, the lack of knowledge mutes a child's voice in being able to express what's happening to them and to get help. It is damaging to their emotional well-being, allows abuse to continue, and stunts a child's development. Early intervention is important. I think the ages chosen in this curriculum are appropriate. Waiting until high school to teach sex education is too late. By that time, many students are emotionally scarred by abuse and bullying. Others have dropped out in middle school. Some students have become pregnant. In fourth grade, students are engaged in flirtation. Students identifying their gender can occur as early as preschool. By having basic human functionality off limits for discussion, we're indicating it's not acceptable. This curriculum gives the tools they need to develop into healthy, functioning people. As a therapist, I found many adults had a hard time talking about their own sexuality, saying they had a problem with it, lacking the language needed to describe their problem. Without a good education, what they had was shame regarding sex. As it is a local school board's choice whether to use these standards, I urge you to approve them as written. It's important for a state educational institution to offer the best and most accurate information to our citizens.
Time.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Lynn. Point of clarification from anyone? Thank you, Lynn. Jo Springer. Welcome, Jo.
Thank you. My name is Jo Bear Springer. My pronouns are she/her. I'm the executive director at Encourage Advocacy Center, formerly SASSA Crisis Center. Encourage works proactively to address root causes of abuse and violence in Adams, Knuckles, Clay, and Webster Counties and promotes safe, nonviolent communities. Encourage endeavors to model effective relationships and combat human trafficking while empowering survivors of abuse and sexual assault. I'm also someone who has spent most of my adult life as a foster parent, specializing in caring for children who have experienced sexual abuse, and also children who sexually abuse other children. A common thread I see between my work at Encourage, my time as a child welfare caseworker, and my work as a foster parent is shame, secrecy, and people exploiting children's lack of knowledge, often intentionally keeping them from information in order to more easily do them harm. I imagine that everyone here would say they showed up because they want to protect kids. We want kids to have great childhoods that aren't impacted by sexual violence. We want kids to grow to adults who have healthy, respectful relationships. We don't have to guess or wonder about how to help that happen. Research is very clear that information about our bodies and sexuality presented in a clear, age-appropriate, medically accurate, science-based, trauma-informed manner is what leads to the outcomes we all want for children. Knowledge like that included in the proposed health standards is a powerful antidote to shame and secrecy. It teaches kids that their bodies are their own, and they should expect to be respected. It also teaches them to have the same respect for other people's bodies and other people's right to say no. It gives kids the tools they need to protect themselves, to get help if they've been harmed, and to have healthy relationships throughout their lives. I was raised in the way that many of the individuals here are advocating for, kept from any information about sexuality.
Time.
Thank you for your leadership on this topic.
Thank you, Jo. Reverend Chris Jorgensen. Welcome, Reverend.
Thank you. Good morning. As you heard, my name is Reverend Chris Jorgensen. I'm an ordained United Methodist pastor, and I live in Omaha. I want to thank the board for making sure that these proposed health education standards are written by teachers and health professionals and based on scientific research. I'm also the mother of a child in the Omaha public school system, and I'm sure the school board is aware that each time my child has had the opportunity to receive education on human growth and development, I've been invited to exclude her from any part of that education that I would like. I filled out a little yellow form, and I could have chosen to pull her out of any random section of that class, and I understand that under the new standards, school districts will also have that opportunity. Parents will also still have that choice. Personally, I'm grateful that my child has had the advantage of learning about the reality of 21st century life in her health classes, and I think every child should have that opportunity. If parents choose to exclude their children from learning, that is, of course, their decision. However, they should not make that decision for me, my child, and the many people who perhaps do not hold their particular kind of religious values. I, of course, am a pastor, and so I have religious values. Like our friend speaking against these standards, I think we have a responsibility to protect Nebraska children. I would do anything to keep my child safe as well. But as a Christian and as a member of a democratic society, I believe my responsibility is not only to my own child, and when I say protect Nebraska children, I mean all children, and the proposed standards will allow some protection for our LGBTQ Nebraska children from bullying and increased risk of suicide. The elementary standards that we are actually discussing today in grade three simply say, demonstrate ways to promote dignity and respect for people of all genders, gender expressions, and gender identities. And this kind of education, I believe, can be truly lifesaving for Nebraska LGBTQ kids. So thank you, school board, for being in the business of protecting all children. I ask that you stand firm in your inclusion and affirmation of all Nebraskans of all gender identities and sexual orientations in the proposed standards. Thank you.
Clarification in board members? Thank you, Reverend Jorgensen. That concludes that group of eight. The next group of eight includes Kathy Wilmot, Kirby Wilson, Amy Wilson, Michaela Peterson, Kelly Larson, Tammy Larson, Scott Barker, Stephanie Shear. Please come forward. Kathy Wilmot.
Kathy Wilmot, former teacher, former State Board of Education member, a researcher, and so I spend a lot of time at that. From your NDE website, I found a quote, "Comprehensive sexual health education programs ideally start in pre-kindergarten and continue through grade 12." I disagree with that statement. Many of the human growth and development standards that we have now in this draft set of standards actually come straight from the second edition of the National Sex Education Standards. They're not health, they're sex, clear and simple. And it says in the national standards that they focus on sexual orientation, gender identity, social, racial, reproductive justice. And that's where the critical race theory begins to enter in, is through using those national standards. The Youth Risk Behavior Survey shows a trend from 2009 to 2019. We keep hearing everything's getting worse, but during that time, their statistics show students engaged in sexual activity had decreased, black, white, Hispanic students who ever had sex decreased, illicit drug use decreased, decreases also in bullying, dating violence, forced sex until 2017, 2019. So what changed? I'll tell you what changed. Omaha, Lincoln, and a bunch of those towns adopted comprehensive sex ed into their system and began teaching that. Abstinence was no longer the required instruction, which when I was on the state board, it was. And we even typed in our framework about abstinence instruction, no sex outside of marriage, monogamous marriage relationships, et cetera. In other words, abstain from all the dangerous stuff, and we saw declines. Now we're turning around. Someone needs to track this and see what these new standards could do to us. The board's position statement, S1, that's where the evil really came in. We need to go back and look at that statement that was approved in September 2019...
Time.
Because it talks about the racism.
Thank you. Point of clarification for you, Kathy? Jaclyn? Then Robin.
I don't want anyone to feel like I'm picking on them. I promise I'm not. But when people tell me where to find things, I really just want to make sure I know. So you said on your website, which I assumed is the NDE website, the term comprehensive sex education, I believe your quote was, starts from kindergarten through 12, was there?
Yeah, they think it ideally begins in pre-kindergarten.
Where was that on the website?
I believe it may be footnoted in the paper I gave you, but if not, I can certainly give it to you. It was up on the health standard somewhere, but I'll find it for you.
If you could provide that to me, I would be most appreciative.
I sure will.
Thank you.
Uh huh.
Robin? There's another question for you, Kathy.
Working? All right. I just, first of all, I had the same question, but most importantly, I wanted to thank you for your years of service on the state board.
Thank you. I was going to say, I know what you all are up against when you got crowds like this coming at you, and I'm glad you gave me a second here. I truly appreciate the time that you're giving us. I know this is a thankless job. I know you get a huge pay check with it. I know better. You volunteer all your hours, and you do rely heavily on the information coming to you. But I know from being on the state board, too, it's easy to end up getting only one side of the issue because staff is always right there, and they're on the cutting edge, and so it takes a lot of research to know, you know, what's really driving these things? Where's it coming from? When they hand you a policy statement, what could the ramifications of that policy statement be? So I'm not jealous of what you're doing right now, but I do thank you for taking the time and trust that you'll do a good job. Thank you.
Thank you, Kathy. Kirby Wilson.
My name is Kirby Wilson, parent, teacher...
Welcome, Kirby.
Business owner, thank you. We said the Pledge of Allegiance earlier. Our nation's motto is, "In God We Trust." If this is the one where we put our trust in, we should probably do everything we can to teach who he is. Dr. Benjamin Rush signed the Declaration of Independence, served in three presidential administrations, helped start five universities, three of which still remain, and was among the first founding fathers to propose nationwide public schools. As most educators at that time believed, he declared that the Bible should be read in our schools in preference to all other books, and for over 100 years, it basically was. Unfortunately, our Departments of Education have removed the Bible from the classroom, which has caused them to sense a need to create a different standard of education than the one our Creator gave, hence the reason we are in this room today. From what you've already heard, there is no need for me to expound on the disgusting sexual garbage that is in these supposed curriculum standards or the lies and hate of the critical race theory, which is also proposed. Everyone in this room knows in their heart... Everyone in this room knows in their heart that these are wrong. For proof of that, read Romans 1, verses 18 through 20. If you'd, I would simply like to read two verses of instruction from our Creator's Instruction Manual and Student Guidebook. This is after Jesus called a child and had him stand among the disciples, and he said in Matthew 18, verses 6 to 7, "But if anyone causes one of these little ones who believe in me to sin, it would be better for him to have a large millstone hung around his neck and be drowned in the depth of this sea. Woe to the world because of the things that cause people to sin. Such things must come, but woe to the man through whom they come." I shudder to think of the eternal judgment to be handed out to those that would create a standard that will cause others to sin in this manner. I suggest that you scrap the entirety of your proposed curriculum standards, get back to teaching reading, writing, arithmetic, logic, reasoning, and moral truth. It is my understanding that there is no requirement by the state legislature to create these standards. I would pray that you completely remove and not replace these standards. Thank you.
Thank you, Kirby. Any points of clarification? Amy Wilson.
Good morning and thank you for being here. I'm just saddened for the reason that we are all here. I'm asking you to get rid of the sex education you're proposing. It is a subject that is better left to the parents to teach to their children, and the critical race theory does not belong anywhere in our public education. I truly in my heart can't believe someone in the United States of America would use children as a political pawn to further their Marxist, communist, socialist, and progressive ideas. We are talking about children, and yes, I understand if we can, if you can control them now, you have a better chance of controlling them later with your leftist ideas. But teaching children pornography and to be racist is truly a crime. I believe anyone that teaches this curriculum is exploiting children and should be put in jail for child abuse. That is what this is so-called health education is, or whatever you want to label it, child abuse. Any parent that allows the curriculum to be taught to their child is giving consent to exploit their child. So again, I ask you to please completely get rid of this so-called health education. Let's get back to teaching children reading, writing, and arithmetic, and true history. Thank you for your time, and please remember, you are elected officials, and the majority of the people you represent do not want this in our public education. Thank you.
Thank you, Amy. Michaela Peterson. Welcome, Michaela.
Thank you. Hello, my name is Michaela Peterson, and I am a ranch wife, mama of four, pharmacist, and health coach. My husband Mark and I are passionate about sex trafficking awareness, and I am hoping to bring up a point that may have not been considered. Last weekend, I had the opportunity to visit Pure Hope Ranch in Texas for the third time in four years. Pure Hope's mission is to restore and rehabilitate women who have survived sex trafficking, as well as to strengthen families. I had the privilege of speaking with one of the counselors, and one thing she said has haunted me and prompted me to speak today. She said, "With media, movies, and curriculums taught in some states, sex traffickers don't even need to groom children anymore because they have already been desensitized and have learned inappropriate information. I am not sure why we would want to make sex traffickers' lives easier by implementing these standards like these into our precious children's educational experience. I could not find much science that supports these new standards. In fact, some of the first states to implement CSE were Oregon, California, and Washington. And I would ask, based on the events of the past year's headlines alone, how is it working out for them? Are more well-rounded individuals coming out of these programs? Are they better equipped to be productive members of society? We are the good life state. As elected officials, I am asking that you contend for the voice of parents like us and not only get rid of these proposed standards altogether, but instead follow examples like Idaho, Tennessee, and Florida, and ban the teaching of CSE completely in our great state. Thank you."
Thank you, Michaela. Welcome, Tammy.
Thank you. My name is Tammy Larson. I'm a resident of Carney, mother of three children, grandmother of five, four of them outside the womb, all of whom live in Nebraska, and I'm an educator. You'll notice that most of us here are older. This doesn't mean old and outdated. It's Friday, and most of those with school age or future school age children are working, whether at home or at other workplaces. Like the overwhelming majority of speakers this morning, I am speaking out in opposition to draft one of these health standards. I have nothing profound to say that hasn't already been said, but I want you to know that there are many Nebraskans in opposition, and I represent those who are either too fearful to speak or are unable to be here. I am here for them, for our community, for our state. I am thankful for your efforts to listen to the varying opinions of these health standards. Only you know the majority of the opinions, however, I would like to suggest that perhaps there are those promoting these new sex education standards that are counting on our past complacency, but no more. I also wonder about the high likelihood of non-Nebraskans who are commenting on these standards, whether via email, surveys, or other comments, and thereby are trying to influence your decisions. I'd like you also to consider the past, the present, and the future. In the past, when these standards were written, were they truly written with the hearts and minds of our children, or were they possibly written with a social, political agenda in mind? For the future, if these standards were to be approved, do you recognize that you will have many teachers and families who will be unwilling and unable to continue attendance? Many will exit this school system, and quite honestly, many of these teachers and families are those who are good for our schools.
Time. Thank you.
Thank you.
Tammy, thank you. Points of clarification? Kelly? I skipped over you, I apologize. So Kelly Larson.
That's quite all right, it's understandable, thank you. My name is Kelly Larson, I'm pastor Cornerstone Berean Church here in Carney, but on the document I provided you, you have the names of 26 other pastors and churches that I'm representing here today. I made the case before you last month that the sex education standards in this proposal are in vital conflict with Christian, as well as Muslim and Jewish beliefs. And I know that you have been hearing this message repeatedly. Since there is nothing requiring you to adopt these standards, this means that if you choose to do so, you are knowingly disregarding and even supplanting the faith convictions of countless Nebraskans. But today, I'm focusing my comments on our pastoral concern for the well-being of our children. In reference to gender, the proposed standards are not only not grounded in medical science, but are actually in harmful opposition to them. All agree that suicide rates among those struggling with gender dysphoria are extremely high, but with this, please consider that the prevalence rate of gender dysphoria among adolescent girls is skyrocketing. Psychology Today has reported this, but they've also linked this to the suggestive power of social media influencers and peer pressure. In other words, this dysphoria is often socially constructed, meaning that exposing our children to these gender topics in school may actually increase suffering by suggestion, and unless something changes, this would also increase suicide. You've heard that the suicide rates are blamed on a lack of social affirmation, but in Sweden, the suicide rate among those who undergo sex reassignment surgery is still 20 times higher than that of their peers. And since Sweden is one of the most transgender-affirming nations in the world, this strongly suggests that neither medical treatment nor social affirmation alleviate this issue. We are asking you to please recognize that to introduce these concepts into our schools is to recklessly risk the well-being of our children, and not on the basis of science, but on the basis of a new belief system. For these and many other reasons that I don't have time to state today, we are urging that you remove all new sex education topics from these standards. Thank you.
Thank you, Kelly. Scott Barker? Did I say that correctly?
You did.
Thank you.
Good morning, my name is Scott Barker, I'm the bishop of the Diocese of Nebraska of the Episcopal Church. We are 52 faith communities across the state, including St. Luke's on the other side of the viaduct here in Carney. My family's lived in Nebraska for seven generations. There were no public schools when we came to the Nebraska Territory, but once they were built, every generation of my family has attended, and we have flourished because of that great start in life. I'm here to strongly support the standards for health education being considered today. I urge you to move forward in adopting these standards unchanged. Nebraska's schools urgently need this resource to continue offering outstanding education for the youth of our state. My support for these standards is based principally on one cherished belief. I believe that at the heart of public education lies our shared responsibility to teach young people facts. I believe that all the material in this plan, which has sparked controversy, is factual material, and that if neglected as part of the health education of our kids, may do grave damage to their human development and our social fabric. It is a fact that healthy families are structured in every imaginable way under the sun, and that children can flourish even in single-parent homes and in two-parent homes, and with parents who embrace any sexual orientation or gender identity. It is a fact that homosexuality is not a choice or a lifestyle, but an orientation planted in human beings, I believe by God, and many of our Nebraska family, friends, and neighbors seek only to be affirmed as human beings, desiring love and liberty like everybody else. It's a fact that transgender and other non-binary folks live and work in our midst all across Nebraska, contributing to our communities in every imaginable way, and it is a fact that that population in particular often experiences the worst kind of discrimination and violence because of learned prejudice and ignorance and fear. It's a fact that comprehensive age-appropriate education about human reproduction and birth control actually brings down the number of STIs and unintended pregnancies in the community. I respect that for some folks, including many here today, these facts are uncomfortable. They will say these standards are political or unscientific, but that is inaccurate. As the leader of a large Nebraska faith community, I thank you for your service and urge you to support these measures.
And the board will receive the rest of your comments. Thank you, Scott.
Can I ask a question?
Point of clarification, Scott.
I didn't hear what faith community you represented, I'm sorry.
The Episcopal Church, I'm the bishop of the diocese of Nebraska.
And the diocese, so that's the whole state?
It's the whole state.
Thank you, I appreciate it.
You bet.
Stephanie Shear. Welcome, Stephanie.
Thank you. My name is Stephanie Shear, I'm a mother of four with children in the Nebraska school system. Thank you for listening to the comments today and for your service to the board. With anything new being proposed, there will always be those in favor and those against. As you know, many stakeholders in the state of Nebraska are extremely alarmed at the proposed health standards, so maybe we can just take a step back and look at what standards are meant to accomplish. It's my understanding that state standards need to be measurable. How can you measure a child's understanding of gender identities when there is no existing consensus on how many gender identities actually exist? How can you measure a child's understanding of ways to respect different family structures when each family structure may feel disrespected by different things? Looking through the standards, it's evident that many of them are immeasurable. The board should also be urged to consider the impossible position these standards would put teachers in. If you've ever been around five, six, seven, and eight-year-olds, you know they ask a lot of questions. Does the board consider it to be within the scope of the teacher's vocational responsibility to explain the spectrum of sexual orientation to third graders? Or think about what a kindergartner might ask when they are taught that a household can have two dads? Is it really in the best interest of our teachers, students, and schools to introduce young children to content that in order to be fully understood relies heavily on an understanding of adult sexual relationships and interactions? As far as teaching young children about differences in how they look or what their families look like, kids don't care. They don't see the differences. My kids go to a very diverse school. They don't see color. They don't look at someone and think, "Oh, they're different from me because they live with their grandma." That is not how kids' brains work. It is how adult brains work, however. Do we really want to ruin that for our children? Pointing out differences that our kids don't even notice will fracture the unity of our students. It is my opinion as a stakeholder in the Nebraska public school system that the comprehensive sexuality education and critical race theory components of the health standards be removed. Thank you.
Thank you, Stephanie. That concludes that group of eight. Dawn Darling, Tashana Sawyer, Lanay Hall, I hope I pronounced that correctly, Liam Rodriguez, I can't read the middle, Marty Carrington, Chris Kinzel, Ruby Kinsey, Andrew Gartner. And that would be it. So Dawn, would those folks please come forward? Welcome, Dawn.
Thank you. Good morning, my name is Dawn Darling, my pronouns are she/her. I'm a licensed independent clinical social worker in private practice in Carney, providing mental health therapy and specializing in working with gender-diverse people. I'm here to advocate on behalf of the gender and sexually diverse children of Nebraska. I'm aware of the fear that the proposed health standards would negatively affect children's mental health. I'm here to attest that this is simply not true. In fact, what negatively affects children's mental health is teaching them that gender and sexual diversity is wrong, embarrassing, or a disgrace. Since our schools currently do not have anything in the health standards to help guide them in teaching students about gender and sexual diversity, our LGBTQ children are left having to fend for themselves every day at school. I work with children and their parents who tell me they have to come out to and educate their schools and their parents and their peers over and over about their diversity, while also navigating the stress of being bullied, rejected, and discriminated against because others don't understand or accept them for who they are. This is what's detrimental to children's mental health. Credible research shows that teaching children about gender and sexual diversity does not change their genders or sexuality, but it does promote positive school outcomes, helps them feel accepted, and helps kids be more accepting of others' experiences different from their own. When I look at the goals of the State Board of Education, one of your goals is to ensure that all Nebraskans have equitable access to opportunities for success by providing resources to students based on what they need to be successful. I'm sure that this is meant to include our gender and sexually diverse children, and their best chance at success in public school and for their future is to be seen, included, and accepted at school. I'm calling on the Nebraska Department of Education to align themselves with the U.S. Department of Education, who advises gender-diverse students are covered by Title IX, and to keep the proposed gender diversity and sex education topics included in the draft health standards. Thank you.
Thank you, Dawn. Clarification? Deborah?
Yes, I have two questions. I didn't first catch your profession, did you say you're a mental health therapist?
Yes, I am.
Okay. And you work with a variety of students. Is there a large population of youth that identify as transgender or GLTQ that you work with here in Carney?
Yes, there are.
Okay.
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Dawn. Tashana Sawyer? Welcome, Tashana.
Thank you. I am Tashana Sawyer, and I work for the Crisis Center in Grand Island. I have worked primarily with trafficking victims for the last four years. I want you to think about what you know about trafficking, take it and throw it away. It is not the movie Taken, it is not strangers, it is people that we know, from people that, it happens from people that we trust. Trafficking is about manipulation and coercion. Coercion that happens because children do not understand consent, social stigma, and shame. The individuals I have worked with were not taken advantage of because they didn't understand, were taken advantage of because they didn't understand they could say no. They didn't have someone they could talk to when they felt something was getting out of control, and they didn't know about their body's boundaries. These standards teach children how to protect themselves, who to tell when someone is, when something is wrong, and gives them a voice about their body and their interactions. It allows them to understand the world the way it is. The reality of today's world can be overwhelming. We cannot continue to pretend these things are not happening. Kids will learn about consent and sexual education in their homes and that they will know what to do, because that's not what happens. These standards will empower them, allow them to have dialogues in the open, so children can avoid embarrassment and shame that no one, that helps no one but the perpetrators. Perpetrators thrive on children not knowing what to do when they are exposed to sexual behavior in advances. They find where the person is vulnerable and exploit that. We need to make sure that children have the language and the knowledge to help them from being victims. This curriculum doesn't teach bad behavior, it teaches information. It is up to parents to teach children values, but gives children the language to engage in that conversation. The standards teach to the level that the children understand and are built upon by the expertise of doctors and psychologists. It takes into account developmental levels. It staggers the information so children have a chance to process- It staggers the information so children have a chance to process this and work through the questions that they have with their families and trusted adults. If you want to fight exploitation of Nebraska's children, you will vote in favor of these standards.
Thank you, Tashana. Clarification from anyone? Thank you, dear. Lanay Hall? Did I pronounce that correctly? Lucky me. Welcome, Lanay.
Thank you. I'm Lanay Hall from Hastings. I am a mental health therapist, a parent of LGBTQ youth, and I'm also a queer, transgender, non-binary human. I'm here in support of these health education standards as proposed. Age-appropriate, medically accurate, science-based, comprehensive sexuality and gender education is a protective measure. Trauma-informed, affirming education and support protects children and youth from abuse and trauma, and buffers them from mental and emotional health issues related to the stress of discrimination and stigmatization. LGBTQ youth experience higher rates of depression, anxiety, and suicidality. Invalidating messages that their experience and existence is considered defective or evil causes deep trauma. This situation is entirely unacceptable when it can be proactively averted through appropriate support and education. Being trans is not mental illness. No major medical or mental health organization considers transgender identities disordered. Consider this: in the natural order of the world, a diversity of biological sexes exists, and from this, a diversity of gender possibilities. Creation is neither binary nor limited. Why should we limit our perception, interpretation, or teaching of it? Queer and trans kids deserve affirming, inclusive health education curriculum that acknowledges the value and validity of their humanity and their existence, because their humanity and their existence is a gift. But not only do queer and trans youth deserve this, all youth deserve this. Comprehensive, age and grade-appropriate, science-based, trauma-informed education is protective and empowering for all, and can help cultivate an affirming and respectful school environment and inform inclusive anti-discrimination policy that benefits all students. I would have wanted this for my teenage self, and I want it for my children. I want it for the queer and trans youth whom I serve. I want it for their mental and emotional well-being, their wholeness, their psychological and spiritual welfare. Their wholeness, well-being, and welfare is ours also. I urge you to adopt these standards through the comprehensive, inclusive, affirming value they offer for all of our youth. Thank you.
Thank you, Lanay. Clarification, Lanay?
Oh, sorry.
Deborah? I'm sorry. You mentioned that this is being transgender, gay is not a mental health disorder.
Correct.
But we've heard today some people quoting the DSM. Can you please help me better understand where your comments come from? Thank you.
So that is inaccurate information, outdated information, because the American Psychiatric Association, the American Medical Association, the American Psychological Association all support the validity of transgender identity, sexuality, different orientations, and that has been removed from the DSM V. You were hearing that earlier, that's the Diagnostic Statistical Manual that guides our diagnostic codes. Being transgender or sexuality, different orientations, that is not included in there any longer as mental illness, that's been removed.
Thank you.
Anyone else for clarification? Thank you, Lanay.
You're welcome.
Liam? I can't pronounce, I can't read the middle.
Good morning. My name is Dr. Liam Hirtan Rodriguez. I have a master's degree in clinical social work and a PhD in educational psychology specializing in cognition and development. I'm an assistant professor of social work at UNO, though my testimony today is as a private citizen and does not represent any official position of the University of Nebraska. I appreciate the board's clear commitment to hearing from all constituencies. Also, unsubstantiated outrage is not equivalent to scientific evidence, content expertise, and practice experience. There's been significant fear-mongering regarding the age-appropriateness of some of the proposed standards, especially those that address gender and sexuality. In reality, the proposed standards are deliberately matched to developmental levels and needs and intentionally sequenced across grades. Different factors influence developmental appropriateness at the standards level, the curriculum level, and the delivery level. At the standards level, which the board is operating at, the primary considerations in determining developmental appropriateness is if the content is, one, conveyed before it is needed, and, two, is suitably scaffold onto previous knowledge. This is why it's crucial that health education, including gender and sexuality, is sequenced across all of the curriculum. Sexual risk reduction education taught at age 16 is not developmentally appropriate to the 20% of young people who have had sexual intercourse by age 15. Similarly, the same lesson is not developmentally appropriate for young people who have never been taught about their own bodies, development, autonomy, consent, or assertiveness. The scientific evidence that supports comprehensive, inclusive, and medically accurate health education is overwhelming. We know what protects and fosters the physical, psychological, and social well-being of young people. I urge the board to act on that evidence and adopt the proposed health education standards.
Thank you, Liam. Any clarification? Thank you again. Marty Carrington. I almost skipped over you. Welcome.
Good morning. My name is Marty Carrington. I'm a crier, y'all. My son almost died. Last summer, my son, who is a trans boy, attempted suicide and self-harm. We were lucky in that he was unsuccessful, and he tells me he feels lucky he was unsuccessful. I have raised my children to use correct words for our body parts. We discuss hygiene, gender, sexuality, respect, consent, healthy relationships, politics, religion, openly and honestly. We are a home full of open and difficult, candid conversations. We do this as a supplement to school, as most caregivers do. And yet still, my son almost died. When my son attends school for eight hours a day, he feels othered. He doesn't hear his reality reflected in the language used or the examples given or the stories told. He is surrounded by many kids whose parents are just not teaching these things at home. Or worse, some children are being taught horrific stereotypes, inaccurate information, and dangerous rhetoric. Our kids spend so much time together, and when given the right tools, they have the power to create a safe and trusting environment within their peer group. Without these tools, they are blowing in the wind, perhaps following what they see on social media and non-trustworthy websites. My son, in an attempt to seek stories similar to his own, sought information online and ended up in a wormhole of message boards and blogs that encouraged him to think less of himself, to consider self-harm, and to ideate about suicide. Even with scream time rules and parents who monitor content and talk about disinformation, he was ill-equipped without online literacy training. My son almost died. I ask this board to approve the proposed health standards, which are evidence-based, affirming, and factual. These standards must be passed and incorporated into our school curriculum, not only for my son, who has my heart, but for all of our kids, so we can prepare them for not only school, but the world beyond.
Thank you, Chris.
Thank you.
Thank you. Marty, I'm sorry, thank you, Marty. Clarification, Deborah?
Thank you. At what age did your, is it?
My son.
Your son know or understand what was going on with him?
We began conversations, he shared information with us, he came out as gay when he was about eight, and from there went on a journey with him and identified as transgender and began transitioning around age 11.
And do you have other children?
I do, I have two other children.
And what is their reaction to all of this?
Oh, my seven-year-old will be the first to provide correct pronouns if someone uses incorrect pronouns. And when we shared with our other children about my son's transition, our youngest, who is seven, was just, "Okay." And we said, you know, "My son uses he/him, and this is how we'll do it." And he said, "Oh, so I have a brother now." It was pretty cool.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Thank you again, Marty. Chris Kinsey? Welcome, Chris.
Good morning. My name is Chris Kinsey, and I am a parent of a high school-aged daughter in Wayne, Nebraska. I am here today in support of adopting the Nebraska health education standards. As a parent, we are always wanting our children's education to be evolving, for them to have access to the latest, most relevant information. When it comes to health education, specifically in the area of human growth and development, I feel like we are moving in the wrong direction in Nebraska schools. I honestly feel like less is being taught than when I was in school 30 years ago. And I know that our local school has cut things from that area in the last 15 years. There have been some updates to the subject, and yet we are teaching less instead of more. As parents, we have no idea, when we move to a rural community or another school district, what the local school will or will not teach. The idea that we would have a uniform standard curriculum across the state for health education, and as parents would know exactly what to expect, is quite comforting. Imagine my surprise when I realized that that awkward fifth or sixth grade meeting about puberty that we all remember was no longer taught in our local public school, but was also not a requirement. I was shocked to hear the outdated and impractical version of sexual education my daughter learned in the eighth grade, "Wait Training," which stands for "Why Am I Tempted?" was riddled with religious connotations and misogyny. There is nothing about puberty or hormones, and definitely no practical information for children struggling with their sexual orientation or identity. Nothing to help my struggling child, who is asexual and thought there was something wrong with her, realize that it was okay for her to not be tempted at all. I understand that those who oppose this think this is a personal matter only taught at home. I agree, we should all be talking about sexual education in our homes. I firmly believe that we can teach children the scientific standardized information at school and that let parents pick up.
Time.
Thank you very much.
Your document will be seen by all.
Thanks.
The rest of it. Thank you. Thank you, Chris. Robin, did you have a point of clarification? Thank you.
Yes, I want to make sure, not really, you don't, it's not a question for you, I just, but when you commented, it triggered something, okay? So I want to make sure that we understand that standards are very broad, and that is coming from the department. But the curriculum and the teaching of that curriculum is not our privy. And I just want to make sure that everybody understands that. Ultimately, this is, in my opinion, the greatest example of local control that we have in the state of Nebraska, when we talk about this standard. Because ultimately, the local school district is going to be responsible for this.
Ruby Kinsey?
Hello, my name is Ruby Kinsey. I am 17 years old and a junior in high school in Wayne, Nebraska. I am here today in support of the Nebraska health education standards. As a junior in high school, the only sexual education I have received in the Wayne Community School System was an approximately six-week program in the eighth grade called "Wait, Why Am I Tempted?" Training. This was an absence-based program focusing on not having sex before marriage. Although there was some good information regarding healthy relationships and dating, it was quite lacking. We did learn the proper etiquette for dating and were given several ideas for wholesome dating activities and even planned a date as an activity. We were told that we should not ever let a significant other pressure us into sex, and the emphasis of other aspects of romantic relationships are more important than sex. It was also explained to us, it was also implied using the visual aid of a piece of duct tape getting less sticky after each use, each time it was stuck to something, that the more sexual partners we had throughout our life, the less value we would have as a romantic and sexual partner. The other analogies used to discourage us from having sex before marriage were sex in marriage is like a fire in a fireplace, but sex in marriage is, sex outside of marriage is like your house being on fire, or sex in marriage is like a fish in its fish hole, but sex outside of marriage is like a fish out of water flopping around. The program ended with a graphic PowerPoint presentation by one of the doctors in Wayne about sexually transmitted diseases, I assume to scare us. The question of "Why Am I Tempted?" was never answered that I can remember. What I was never taught in Wayne Community Schools includes nothing about puberty and our growing bodies, nothing about human reproduction or how sex actually works.
Time.
Basically. Okay.
Thank you, Ruby. The rest of your information will be seen by the board.
I have a question, right?
Point of clarification for Ruby?
Yes, please. So, it sounds like to me what you're talking about was an actual curriculum, is that right? So, was this a part of a class in school? Was it part of, like, where, how was it?
It was part of a class that we would, like, these different classes that would switch each quarter which one we took, and this was basically half of one of those, this six-week program.
Was it like a graded class? I'm just trying to find out, like, how, what part of?
Yes, it was graded, but it was mostly graded on participation.
And was it required as part of going to school?
So, parents could exempt their kids, but they would have to, like, go in and talk to the teacher about, like, the curriculum and why they wanted to exempt their kids.
And the teacher, was the teacher that was employed by your school district?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Anyone else? Thank you. Welcome, Andrew.
Hello, my name is Andrew Gardner, and I just had three cups of coffee, so here we go. I work at the First Light Child Advocacy Center in Grand Island, Nebraska, and I work as a family advocate there. Family Child Advocacy Centers, what they do is they give forensic interviews to children who have been abused, and that includes sexual abuse. So, I just want to point out that every child advocacy center in the state of Nebraska approves these standards, and I will tell you why. Grand Island Public Schools usually does a thing called Safe/Unsafe Touch, or Good Touch, Bad Touch. This is in one of the standards for the health standards for what we're talking about, and it's taught at an elementary grade level. Every time they go over this, and it's at a specific time of year, the rates that we need to do interviews go up. And the reason for this is because most cases of abuse happen within the home. So the reason that these are taught in schools is so children actually get that information, and it's not being withheld from parents, many of whom would be abusing their children or other adults in the home, or sometimes other children. So these standards will help give children the language to, you know, say what's happening to them, and that includes the proper names of body parts, including what a penis is and what a vagina is. This makes forensic interviews so much easier, because then we know exactly what they're talking about and we know what to do going forward with abuse. And I will also say that consent taught at these ages does not have to include sex at all, and it usually doesn't at those ages, it just stacks up. So it includes, you know, what's a good touch, what's a bad touch. You have the right to say no to hugging or kissing, especially from, you know, relatives who are...
Time.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Andrew, and all of your... Thank you, Andrew, and all of your information will be disseminated to the board members that you turned in.
Thank you.
Just one question for you. And if you said it, I'm sorry I missed it. You said, at the advocacy center at which you work, whenever particular things are taught at the school, you see an increase in calls or intakes. What is that age at which you're seeing the increase? I mean, if it's a certain age at which, point at which the curriculum or information is taught, and then you see the, is there a correlation?
It would usually be around, like, kindergarten, first, second grade. That's usually when they go over Good Touch, Bad Touch.
Okay.
And they report it to a teacher, and then they report it to us.
Okay, thank you.
Deborah? We're not done with you, Andrew.
Sorry, one more, Andrew.
We're not done.
Sorry. So you're, you're saying in Grand Island Public Schools?
Yes.
And so when they teach consent, they're really teaching Good Touch, Bad Touch?
Yes, that is-
They're not teaching, is that, did I hear that correctly?
Yes, what they're doing is like teaching, well, we prefer the term Safe-Unsafe Touch because good and bad implies like a different word.
Oh, okay, okay.
So, like, Safe-Unsafe Touch is basically the same concept, which is in the standards, from what my reading is.
Thank you.
Thank you, Andrew. Our next group of eight will be Teddy Blalock, Marian Holstein, Chad Anderson, Rebecca Gillyard, Forty-six, is that right? Jody Peterson, and then Paul Hazard? Please come forward. Welcome, Teddy.
Hi. Okay. Hello, my name is Teddy Blalock, and I'm a public health student at UNO. I'm also a proud queer and non-binary individual. I would like to talk about my personal experience with sexual education curriculum in school. I am an ex-Catholic that went to private school my entire life. During this time, I was told that being different was bad and to conform to heteronormative standards. I was not allowed to express my sexuality or gender to any trusted adult in my life. I found out I was queer in eighth grade. Since I was living in such a heavily Catholic environment, there was no one I could talk to. I was scared, alone, and began to struggle with my mental health. I did not feel like I could talk to my parents about this issue because of offhand comments made in the past. I couldn't talk to my guidance counselor or my favorite teacher there, because they would have told me my feelings were wrong and it was just a phase. When I was in high school, I never talked about my sexuality or gender to anyone who I didn't know was explicitly queer, though having friends who were the same as me was not enough to fix how Catholic institutions broke me. From my teachers refusing to teach anything about LGBT people, to having debate whether gay people deserve the right to get married, to hearing a teacher yell at two girls who held hands during gym class, it's extremely disheartening. This is why I believe the people who use the argument, "I don't mind gay or trans people existing, as long as my kid is not exposed to it," actually translates to, "I don't support these groups of people and would disown my kid if they came out to me." It's no wonder that kids don't feel safe coming out to their families. I eventually was able to come out to my parents as non-binary, that I was changing my name and I was pursuing top surgery. However, what was supposed to be a moment of relief, I was met with anger. My parents found excuses for my feelings, claiming I had a condition called rapid onset gender dysphoria. This unscientific debunked disorder reinforces the idea that being transgender is a fad, and what I'm feeling will fade. They believe I came to this decision overnight when it had been years in the making. It hurts when the people who took care of you and helped you become an adult stop supporting you. I was able to create a boundary with my parents with the help of my partner-
Time.
...who helped me see-
Time. Thank you, Teddy. Your information, the rest of your speech will be given to the board members. Thank you, Teddy.
Thank you.
Thank you. Marian Holstein. Welcome, Marian.
I'm PJ Huchangarwenga Hingaidi. Good morning, this is a good day. My name is Marian Holstein. My traditional name is Winnebago woman that was given to me in our traditional medicine lodge, which was our spirituality long before our land was occupied. Good morning, President Nichols, school board members, commissioner, and NDE staff. Thank you for all the work that you do. I'm here to, to repeat a few things that I've addressed the board on before. First of all, the projected teacher shortage, and how that will affect our four schools on tribal lands. You know, we, I spoke to you before about the, about the necessity for teachers transferring from other states, need to take the practice, praxis, pay fifteen hundred dollars, et cetera. So I want to bring that topic up again. Another topic I want to discuss is the topic of mascots, and how they are still used in some schools within the state, and how that really affects our, our children's social and emotional well-being. And I think this would be a good time for me to recruit members here to also speak up for our Native American children, and to help protect them and their well-being and their mental health. So, currently, I am the executor of the Nebraska Indian Education Association. We have just recently be formed, been formed, because we noticed that there is that lack of the true and accurate history of our people being taught. We were not savages. We did have spirituality, et cetera.
Time.
Thank you.
Thank you, Marian. And if you have a document you'd like to hand in with the rest of your information, just give it to-
Excuse me.
-Andrew. Oh, point of clarification, dear. Robin.
Hello, Marian. Yes. For, for the rest of you, Marian has been in front of the board numerous times, and we always appreciate her, her part-
Thank you.
-in this. And as I'm following this, you said something about, something facts. Did anybody else catch it, some, that something facts are being taught? And I just, I just missed it.
Oh, the, just the facts of our true culture and history. I, I first stood before this board because of the social studies standards, and how I wanted to have them improved, because all, after all, this is education we're speaking about, and how education evolves, and as we do new research and have new information, we adjust what we're teaching according to that. But I, having had over thirty years of experience with the Head Start programs, who have standards, which are, it's up to, for our standards, it's up to the local school, school districts, and then the teachers to teach in that classroom. And I have faith that our teachers will, will teach these subjects with compassion and, and nobility. I have trust that our teachers will do that. And I have trust that our local school boards will get more input. But I would like to see input from the students, because we're always forgetting the students. This is who we're serving. And with technology today, they probably already know most of this, and if it's not taught to them, it gets up in hearing, gets all mixed up, and comes out a lot differently, so.
Thank you, Marian. Thank you.
Thank you, Marian. Chad Anderson. Welcome, Chad.
Thank you. Before my time starts, can I address a question that the board had previously about critical race? I just wanted to provide some clarification from before, and direct you to some buzzwords that were, that were in the, in the proposed standards, including, or phrases, including cultural issues, social health, cultural biases, cultural trauma, and tools of systemic racism, just a few, and you'd find it in this red pamphlet that you received earlier, so. Sorry. But my name is Chad Anderson. I'm from Carney, Nebraska. I would like to thank you all for giving me a chance to speak today. After reading through the proposed health standards, I found the proposed curriculum that pertained to diet, exercise, and substance abuse contained many good things. However, I found that most of the curriculum that pertained to human growth and development, and social, emotional, and mental health, were absolutely unacceptable on all grade levels. And here are a few reasons why I feel that way. Under the proposed standards, children will be taught topics on sexuality at much too young of an age. I believe that many of the topics should be taught at home versus the school, anyway. To add to that, the students would be taught that being transgender or homosexual is normal, or simply another way to identify themselves. I believe this is wrong, and goes against how we were created and the science that is involved with it. Emergency contraception was also listed among the things to be taught to young girls as a way to get out of an unplanned pregnancy. This, to me, is also absolutely terrible, and has no place in the school curriculum. Lastly, I would like to add that I was very displeased to see that mask-wearing was listed among the handwashing and coughing and sneezing etiquette in the kindergarten curriculum. Masks have no place in a permanent curriculum. They were intended for temporary use, they have no significant benefit in reducing disease. Thank you.
Thank you, Chad, thank you.
No, 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 I picked up the wrong one.
Pardon me?
Sorry, that's my fault, I picked up the wrong thing. He's still, he's still-
He still has more time?
Yeah.
Okay, go ahead, Chad.
He's got one more second.
Okay, thank you, I appreciate that. They have no significant benefit in reducing disease, and they are causing much harm to our children, both psychologically and physically, and they should never be instituted again. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you. Clarification, anyone? Thank you, Chad.
Sorry, Chad. Grabbed the wrong call.
Rebecca. Is it Gillyard?
It is.
Welcome.
Thank you. My name's Rebecca Gillyard, and I'm a mother and foster mother in Carney. I'm representing members of the Protect Nebraska Children Coalition, and I'm providing public comment and opposition to draft one of the proposed health standards. Research shows that CSE sexualizes children. Several examples of such overt sexualization can be found in the popular curriculum Rights, Respect, and Responsibility, which has been implemented to some degree in the Omaha Public School System since 2016. The first example is for kindergarten, and I quote, "So a person with a vulva has three holes between their legs and a very sensitive little area at the top called the clitoris." This is kindergarten. Lesson two, page two. The second example is for second graders, and I quote, "The vagina has great elasticity and can adjust to the size of a penis in second grade." That is lesson one, page four. Another example is for sixth graders, and I quote, "Ask the students to share the characteristics from their worksheet that describe this romantic relationship, and write them beneath the words 'romantic relationship.' Facilitate the discussion for these possible responses, proposing them if they are not mentioned. Kiss and do other sexual activities." That's sixth grade, lesson five, page two. CSE curricula sexualizes our children, thus failing to acknowledge that sexually active children are at high risk for multiple negative outcomes. Specifically, in our state, the groups and organizations who are part of the writing committee and/or influence the contents of the draft one can ultimately be traced back to the Sexuality Information and Education Council of the United States and Planned Parenthood, who are the current world leaders in creating and promoting CSE. Sexuality Information and Educational Council of the United States is partnered with the United Nations Educational, Scientific, and Cultural Organization, who has also published the highly controversial international guidelines on sexuality, sexuality education. Additionally, our local Nebraska groups such as OutNebraska and the Women's Fund of Omaha have connections to these organizations as well. This material is harmful for our children and should not be included.
Time. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Rebecca. Gerald? Did I pronounce that correct?
Thank you for, thank you for giving me this time this morning. I ended up taking a lot of notes and, and finally decided I needed to part completely from what I had submitted to you, but, my name Gerald Kirchner, former teacher, former professional, and former church deacon, elder. And I'm here speaking not on my authority, but on the authority of Almighty God. And I have lots of friends here who are speaking on that same authority. So I have to arrive at this piece of clarification. You need to understand that critical race theory and comprehensive sex education are both stepchildren of critical theory. Critical theory was designed to create cultural division. Critical theory comes to us after World War I, through the university system, thanks to the Frankfurt Group, a Marxist group, Students of Marx and Engels. This objection to comprehensive sex education, and objection to critical theory, is about those corrosive things working in our culture to divide us. Black Lives Matter is no different than White Lives Matter. In fact, you should just stop putting the race part in it, you should say lives mattered. But why do we say black lives, or white lives, or Oriental lives, or Asian lives? Because critical race theory is dominating our culture, and it's destroying us. Now to the question of our, the health issue, the, the teaching sexuality in our schools, that belongs to the parents. The school has no business trying to teach something that requires moral teaching along with its manifestation. You can't teach sex without teaching morality. And I want my children to teach my grandchildren about sex. I don't want some idiot I never met in a school teaching my grandchildren about sex. And, so I'm done, thank you.
Thank you, Gerald. Clarification from anyone? Alicia. Welcome, Alicia.
Hello, my name is Alicia Troutman. I'm a resident of Hastings, Nebraska, and I was raised in Oglala, Nebraska. I have a seven-year-old son who is in the first grade, and I am currently pregnant with my second child. I'm a licensed social worker and have worked with survivors of violence for more than ten years, with a focus on providing services to survivors of sexual violence for the last six years. I also attended the meeting last month with Lincoln and heard many opponents of this standard comment that this education should be taught at home. I completely agree with this statement. But the fact is, for many, is not being taught at home. This is especially true for those children who are most at risk for victimization. As a sexual assault survivor myself, my education at home did not teach me much about sex, much less sexual assault. My S, sex education at home consisted of simply being told that it is a sin to have sex before marriage. This education did me no good in a situation that was completely out of my control. My school at the time, a Nebraska school, did provide basic sex, sex education, which was helpful in many ways, but sexual assault was not included in the curriculum, and I was not aware of my options. Unfortunately, my story is in no way in common. Over the last ten years, I have worked with hundreds of survivors of sexual violence, many of whom even as adults are not fully aware of their options, or understand what all constitutes a sexual assault. Minors are usually even less educated on the topic of sexual assault, and less aware of their options. I am fully in support of the revised health standards. As an individual whose career has focused on sexual assault, I know that teaching our children about consent, safe touch, and proper names for genitalia is crucial. In my career, I have worked with children who did not properly understand their anatomy. I speak from professional experience when I say that a child who cannot explain their body parts or just is detrimental, uses nicknames for their body parts, can reduce a report's ability to go anywhere in court. This results in no justice for the child and no accountability for the offender. This is particularly concerning when ninety percent of children were abused by someone with easy access to them.
Time.
Thank you.
Jody Peterson. Welcome, Jody. Welcome, Jody.
My name is Jody Peterson. I'm here today to ask that you pass the proposed health standards. I believe that these health standards address the concerns facing our children today. They take into consideration physical, mental, and social health. They acknowledge that despite our best efforts as parents and community members, our children do experience trauma. The standards allow our educators to be both proactive and responsive to children's needs. I stand before you today as a mother. My own child is gender nonconforming, which means they do not experience gender in the way that we traditionally know it. However, I'd be remiss not to acknowledge that I also have twenty-five years of experience in the public school system. So as much as I speak for my child today, they were not the first to help me learn about these issues, and understand the difficulty that they faced as well. In my time today, I want to share a little bit about my child, who is presently amid the struggle of their life. They yearn to be understood by their peers, and the adults in their life, particularly at school. And yet, they are trapped. While the school staff has been incredibly supportive privately, and in one-on-one interactions, excuse me, my child has been silenced within the classroom. As they have made their transition this year, fifth grade, they have not been able to explain why they're changing their name, explain why gender pronouns are important, or why they've made the changes that they have. It's left everyone feeling a little bit confused, and my child feeling alienated. School administrators had to consult their legal counsel in order to determine what my child could and couldn't say, to whom, and when.
Time.
Thank you.
Thank you, Jody. If you would like to, yes, turn that to Andrea. Thank you. Paul Hazard, is that correct?
Yes, ma'am.
Welcome, Paul.
Thank you. My name's Paul Hazard. I'm a resident of Carney, Nebraska here. I'm a father of three, and retired from the law enforcement community. I'm giving a public statement in opposition to Draft One. I'm speaking on behalf of moms, dads, and parents with some common sense. You guys stated prior, you said, "We expect our kids to follow rules in school, and we expect you to follow the rules here, too." I agree. I agree with that. Wouldn't you also agree, when a kid is instructed to split into pairs of two, and pretend you're in a sexual experience, and you're wanting to have sex, that's in, that's in the documentation, a kid would think they need to comply? You really think they're gonna just say, "No, I'm bowing out of this one"? It's a school. Of course, they're going to comply. And as a father of three, I'm not okay with that, guys. Let's bring on the law enforcement perspective. You just opened a pedophile's dream if you bring this into the state of Nebraska. A pedophile's dream is this: groom 'em, break down the walls, break down the barriers, expose 'em to things. And then guess what? Now it's more acceptable. It's a pedophile's dream. And you guys are considering doing this? It makes no sense. So what happens when you have educated a child on sex, oral sex, anal sex, all of those things? Guess what? You just opened Pandora's Box, because a child learned it in school. It's safe. That's where I'm, that's where I learned it, so that's what I'm trying to partake in. Last thing, you are all elected officials here. You're all elected by good people. And we expect you to do the right thing, but some of you are on your phones more than you're even paying attention to this meeting. Thank you for the time.
Thank you, Paul. The next group of eight consists of, oh, Robin, you have a point of clarification?
Yes.
Paul?
Yes, ma'am. Sir?
Okay, did I hear you correctly? That you said, "In our standards, there is, in that, you called it the documentation, that there's this two, two-person dating game," or whatever it was, you say that's in our standards?
Where it has you split up into groups, and you're, I don't wanna say enacting, but you're, you're role-playing essentially some sort of a sexual type of experience, absolutely.
That is in the Nebraska standards, as you read it?
In the curriculum.
Okay.
And see, that's the problem, guys. How is it the community knows more? Come on.
I, no, I, I just wanna see it. That's all I'm asking.
I understand, I understand. And I do thank you all for your service. I know what it's like to serve.
Because, honestly, I've read this numerous times, and I don't think I've ever seen that. So, I, I really need to see it.
Appreciate it. Thank you.
So, I guess, if I can ask a question? It's similar to what Robin's asking. You referred to documentation. So what is the document that you are referencing? Because the document that we have seen doesn't have that reference in it. So if you could refer me to that document, you don't have to do it right now, then we can review that. But I, I guess, we're confused about which document you're referring to.
Fair. I think it's also fair that it's been referred to numerous times here, so it's not made up. We'll provide it, but one last thing along those same lines. It's also the guidelines you're talking about, right?
No.
And, no, no, I'm just saying, what we're referring to is, everything inside those guidelines, it's up to each individual community to teach. That's what you guys just said.
No, the only question I'm asking is, you said, what you referenced today was in documentation. So could you provide us the documentation you're referring to? Thank you. That's all.
Yes, ma'am.
Patty?
I...
Paul, we're not done.
No, this is not directed to Paul. Thank you, though, for coming back. I would like to just request a very short recess. Now, I'm requesting that because having listened to all of this public comment, I want to be sure that my attention is maintained. And I'm at the point, and I don't know if that's true of other board members, but I'm at the point that I just need five minutes, just to kind of decompress a little bit...
Perfect time, because we are up for the next group of eight. So we will take a, it's 12:06 right now. We will come back at 12:15. The next eight individuals will be Jennifer Thomas, Teresa Cook, Bill Starkey, Tiffany Weiss, Jeremy Erickson, I believe, Lana Bishop, Dwayne Lineman, and Caleb Rohr. I'm sure I mispronounced a few of these names. Forgive me. Thank you. Jennifer. Welcome, Jennifer.
Thank you. Good morning, and thank you for giving us the time to speak today. Again, my name is Jennifer Thomas. My husband and I have children in third and eighth grades in public schools. Please indulge me while I brag on them just a little bit. Academically, they're in the ninety-eighth to ninety-ninth percentile in reading and math, straight A's. More importantly, they're kind, they're respectful to their classmates, their teachers. The number of times I've ever heard anything other than that, thankfully, zero. They love school, they love to learn. We teach them to treat others with love, kindness, regardless of a person's physical characteristics, their religion, or their lifestyle choices. I read the proposed health standards, and quite honestly, I was appalled. It seems to me, telling me as a parent, that I don't know what I'm doing, so it's now the mission of the board to put these standards in place, to replace our moral beliefs in our home with theirs. But I think my family and I are doing just fine in that arena. The comprehensive sexual education outlined in the proposed standards aims to sexualize our children. It's robbing our children of their innocence. It's projecting the liberal adult's obsession with all things sexual onto our children. It's grooming our children for sexual and psychological abuse. It is child abuse. I've seen the claim that these standards are age-appropriate and medically accurate, but they're neither. It's medically impossible for a girl born with XX chromosomes to be a boy, or a boy born with YY chromosomes to be a girl. Their bodies can be surgically altered, given hormones, doesn't make a male a female, or vice versa. I could present you with many more examples of how this ideology is factually wrong, medically inaccurate, unscientific, and age-inappropriate. Much evidence exists to support that view. If you believe differently, anything I say here is unlikely to convince you, and you're entitled to your opinion. But perhaps I can appeal to what I hope is our shared American value-
Time.
-of liberty, freedom, and the rights of parents to teach their children these sensitive topics in accordance with their values. Thank you for the extra seconds.
Thank you, Jennifer. Any points of clarification? Welcome, Teresa.
Thank you. Good afternoon. I am a grandmother of three beautiful children, and one of them is currently in the school system, and the other two, we've got one, one coming up this year. After reading the proposed health standards, I'm reaching out to you to let you know that I strongly oppose these standards, and ask you to scrap every part that deals with sexuality, gender, relationship content, content, as well as critical race theory at all levels. These standards are highly inappropriate for children, and are based on an ideology that many Nebraskans find very unsettling. Many Nebraskans, including myself, believe not only this, but that it will sexualize our youth. If the proposed health standards are passed, many parents will be forced to pull their children out of public schools. Teachers will be forced to decide between going against their own conscience to teach these ideas and theories, or to quit their jobs. This is not right, and it is not fair to pass these standards. Parents are responsible for their children, and have the right to teach what they deem is right for their children, and what they are taught in school. Let's get back to the fact-based core learning, like math, true history, and science. There are things that we should all support that are unifying. Let's teach our kids to be kind to each other and stop bullying. Let's teach kids patriotic love for our country, and for those who gave all of our, gave all for our freedom. Let's teach kids to look into people's hearts, and the content of their character. We can come together in unity. I want to be able to trust our school system, our school boards, the Board of Education. Please scrap these proposed health standards, and the divisive critical race theory. Our children deserve better. Thank you.
Thank you, Teresa. Clarification from anyone? Bill Starkey. Welcome, Bill.
Bill Starkey, Hastings, Nebraska. I'm here to testify against adopting the proposed Nebraska Health Education Standards, in particular, the Human Growth and Development Content strand. I want to give you, as a conservative Christian, I believe that our school systems should not be taking on themselves to cross over into family cultural issues and proclaim that they are the all-knowing in the realm of comprehensive sexual education in the state of Nebraska. Comprehensive sexual education should remain solidly in the dominion of traditional family values. To take that responsibility from the family unit, and present it to our children in a cookie-cutter curriculum that does not take into account age-appropriateness is morally wrong, and does not fit with traditional Nebraska values. Though I do not have issues with traditional sex education in schools at an age-appropriate level that lays out basic reproductive responsibilities for men and women, to teach recreational sex techniques and the emotional responses that are tied to it is beyond the scope and responsibilities of the schools. My reasoning is simple. Children are not to be sexualized, and by teaching about these highly sensitive topics in these proposed standards in a very public way amongst peers and strangers alike, that will take us down that slope. Young brains cannot sort out appropriateness for complex ideas, and they tend to follow the lead of older individuals in perceiving what normal is in society. Children are easily influenced by those individuals and positions of power in their lives. Children can be desensitized to the idea that sex is the expectation of any male-female relationship when taught through these standards in such a graphic manner. If a child has a question, then a social worker or counselor in concert with a child's family can work together to answer those questions at an age-appropriate time. I say no to adopting these proposed standards for comprehensive sexual education by the board. Thank you.
Thank you, Bill. Clarification points? Tiffany Weiss? Did I say that correct?
Weiss.
Weiss, Tiffany Weiss. Welcome, Tiffany.
Thank you. I'm here today to talk about the health standards, and I really hope that you guys will adopt them. I have many lenses that I could look at this through. I am an educator. I teach in the public school system. I have five children who are from preschool to fifth grade. But the thing that I think is most important is that I'm a parent of a gender, a gender-diverse child. My son was seven when he first tried to kill himself. And I can't tell you, as a parent, having a child that young, and what you have to do to keep them safe. And it was because he couldn't tell us, he didn't have the words. Now, he kept saying things like, "I want, I want to be a boy. I, I'm a tomboy." I heard a tomboy a lot. But he didn't have language. He didn't have the word transgender. He didn't have the word gender diverse. He didn't know how to tell us, and we didn't know how to ask. I mean, I had never expected that to happen in my family with my children. And so, instead, at seven years old, I had a child who wanted to kill themselves. He transitioned, he, sorry. What finally made the difference for him is, he saw a performance by Brody Ray Rungy, who is a Carney native, and who was on America's Got Talent. And they did like a little blurb, and they talked about him being transgender. And my son looked at me, and he said, "Mom, that is me. That is it." And as soon as we knew, as soon as we could put language to it, we found a therapist, we found help, we got more and more resources. He transitioned at age nine at school. He was in third grade. And I wanna say the teachers and the staff have been great, but the kids haven't. Just, he's in fifth grade now, and two years, or two days ago, he came to me and said, "Mom, my friend said that I'm not really a boy, because God didn't make me a boy." And he gets very confused.
Time. Thank you, Tiffany. Points of clarification? Thank you, Tiffany. Jeremy? Jeremy Erickson, is it?
First, I wish to point out my preferred name is Julia. I am a trans woman. I have always been a trans woman, as long as I can remember. I started my transition at thirty-nine. I do support this bill, as I didn't have words to describe this, until I was seventeen. And I was always signed out of the healthcare, health plans as a child, as long as I can remember. This led to me being raped and abused many of my years, unable to explain what was happening to me, even until my early adult life. This has required me many years of therapy, even to now, even leading to many suicide attempts, and much dysphoria. And I still fight for a lot of, I think, I know this country is based on equality, and I really think we need to really embrace it by now. I'm up for any questions.
Points of clarification? Deborah?
How old were you when you knew you felt different than the way you were born?
Honestly, even one or two.
I have a question. Are you done, Deborah?
Quick question. At your young age, did you have someone safe to, I didn't hear if you said you had someone safe you could talk to?
No, I did not. I actually, when I even started to try to talk to people at ages of seventeen, I was actually pushed back, told I was just a heterosexual cis male, basically, born male, and just tried to push- to push back, and that I was just goofing around or joking about who I was, and pushed back at that. I was actually, I've been terminated from jobs identifying as female, so. Like I said, I feel like this country has always been based on accepting people for race and everything. I think we need to finally get to that point, even the state, so.
Thank you. Thank you so much. Lana Bishop. Lana? Dwayne Lineman? I hope I have that-
Close enough.
Welcome.
Thank you. I'm Dwayne Lineman from Blue Hill, Nebraska. I stand opposed to the proposed standards. I'm a retired educator of 47 years, and I think there is no doubt, agenda-driven progressive radicals have been entrenched for many years in our entire educational system. They have introduced a gradual but constant litany of anti-family, anti-Christian, anti-conservative, and anti-American ideology, but now at breakneck speed. This effort has now gone to the next level under the pretext of health education to expand a social justice agenda with extreme sex education and critical race theory woven in the proposed health education standards, and I'm certain through social studies and history. This is indoctrination, not education. We ought to remember that one size does not fit all. I question the validity of a guide for sex education training or race theories for K-12. There's no need to blanket a curriculum standard that can be so divisive and dangerous, especially in today's sad environment of abuse, division, pedophilia, and sex trafficking. I don't think we as citizens, parents, and educators should take a chance on being seen as grooming young people for predators. That may sound out there, but is it? Can you guarantee it can't and won't happen? Children are our greatest treasures. Certain culture and government entities seek to expose, normalize, and sexualize our children for the sake of political agenda, desensitize our communities to sex, and expand sexual diversions and perversions. We must protect our children, nurture their minds and hearts by our standards, not yours. We will fight for their innocence and protect them from harm. You as elected officials are to represent the people in this state, not some agenda or orders from a higher progressive organization or liberal group think. I have two questions for you. Can we count on you to follow that objective of adhering to the wishes of the majority of the voices in this room? Number two-
Time.
-how can we know that you haven't already made up your minds, and this all is just theater to somehow appease us?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any points of clarification? Thank you very much, Dwight.
I would like to make one statement if I could, an answer to a question that was put out.
Your time is up. Thank you. Caleb Rohr. Welcome, Caleb.
Thank you. I am a Carney resident and a student at the University of Nebraska at Carney, and today I am speaking, and I represent nearly 52,000 students of the Nebraska University in speaking support of 6,000 of our fellow students that have reported being the victims of sexual assault. As students coming out of our school system that is being affected by this proposal, we have to acknowledge that if the existing standards were sufficient, that one in four women in Dona University would not have been the victims of sexual assault, and that one in 10 students in the University of Nebraska would not be the victims of sexual assault. We require health standards that teach consent and respect for one another much earlier on in the developmental stage. By the time we get to high school, it's too late. And I know that these numbers are underrepresented. I know this because I did not report my own sexual assault when it happened my freshman year of college. And I know that the multiple partners that I've had since have also not reported their sexual assaults when it happened to them. There's a stigma against it, and we are not educated from an early age how to communicate that with our fellow classmates, with our teachers, with our parents, and with others in our community. Unfortunately, we are not taught well enough at home either, as it has clearly led to deficiencies in college. This goes on well past college as well. However, I cannot speak to that as I have not graduated yet. I am not walking this morning because I am here. Thank you.
Deborah.
I don't want to further traumatize you with my question, so if you don't want to answer, I'll understand.
Feel free.
But I'm curious, do you feel like if you would have been taught some of these concepts as a young person, that it would have protected you from some of the trauma that was forced on you?
Yeah, absolutely. Simple things like understanding the way to say no, the ways that you can convey your lack of consent without sounding like, well, as my classmates, my freshman year would call it, well, I'm not going to use that language here, but you're not allowed to say no as a man oftentimes.
Thank you. Jack Pullen?
Just one point of clarification. When you said that you were here on behalf of the students representing the University of Nebraska, or University of Nebraska at Carney, is that in an official capacity, or as a student, are you a member of the student body organization?
I'm a member of the student body, yes.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Caleb. Thank you very much. Our next group of eight. Greg Shaq. Amanda Ristine. Judy Carmazin. Lynette Mitchell. Cynthia Geddes. Jacob Reiter. Susan Big. Greg. Welcome, Greg.
Good morning. Thank you, Board, for being here. My name is Greg Shaqterly. I live here in Carney. I'm married to a wonderful woman and have been for 20 years. We've received many blessings from God, but children are not one of them. We're childless. I represent the average man born to the union of a man and a woman, as all of you are. That's the only way population increases. As I understand the law, the board members present today are tasked with making informed and wholesome decisions representing their voter base, which will affect the children of this state. That is a huge responsibility, and I thank you for being willing to shoulder it. It's heavy. Being self-employed, I'm one of the privileged few who can opt to attend this meeting instead of going to work. Otherwise, this room could not contain those who are concerned about this issue. The Board has heard a cornucopia of information and misinformation in the past several hours, as I have. You've also heard a plethora of opinions. I'm going to leave you with one question, a question asked in a famous courtroom by a famous person to even more famous person. What is truth? Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Greg. Points of clarification? Thanks again, Greg. Amanda. Is it Ristine?
Ristine.
Ristine. Welcome, dear.
Thank you. I am Amanda Ristine from Gothenburg, Nebraska. I am here today as a concerned parent and business owner in our state, strongly opposing draft one of the proposed health standards, which includes comprehensive sexuality education and the controversial political ideology of critical race theory. I was privileged to be in attendance Monday evening to listen to Governor Rickards speak on the proposed health standards. As Governor Rickards said Monday, "The State Board of Education is not required to have health standards. You are simply choosing to create the standards." Audrey Warner, founder and president of Matthew 17 Group, said it best, stating, quote, "Sex education is evil at its core. Sex education was never designed to decrease teen pregnancy or STDs, rather prepare a child for sex," end quote. Several of these topics included in the proposed standards should be addressed with children at the discretion of their parents and guardians. I feel it is important for families to have these conversations at home that are consistent with their values and faith. You, the State Board of Education, are creating standards that represent a large group of Nebraskans, and I chose not to include certain groups to have opinions from both sides, but included out Nebraska for their input and participation. For someone trying to navigate through all the material and information, this is a huge red flag and is very alarming. These are far more than just health standards. I continue to be very concerned with the proposed standards and how they will affect our children. I'm standing with Governor Rickards and several other Nebraskans on this one and asking the State Board of Education to scrap the standards. Thank you.
Thank you, Amanda. Points of clarification? Thanks again.
Judy Carmazin. Carmen Big, miss you. Welcome, Judy.
Thank you. Thank you, Board, for being here today. Excuse me. My name is Judy Carmazin. I'm from Gibbon, Nebraska. I'm a retired senior litigation paralegal. I am a member of the Concerned Women of America, the Pacific Law Center, and protect Nebraskan children and Buffalo County Republican women. I opposed the draft one, and I did pro bono work in California as a paralegal as my 300 hours that I needed to do every three years. I worked with women and children that came from abusive situations, especially the children. After a similar draft one was passed in California, we found that it was harder for us to prepare our children that had been abused for court because they had come to believe that the abuse was their fault, it was normal, and they didn't think anything was wrong. And they were as young as five. This is why I oppose it, because I witnessed the damage that could be done. As an individual, I, my biological father sexually abused my older sister. She was too scared to say anything to my mother. I witnessed it as young as five. I didn't know what he was doing. I didn't have the names. I didn't need to know the names. I just knew it was wrong. I told my mother, and I got it stopped by not having the information. I don't want our children and my children and grandchildren-
Time. Thank you, Judy. Thank you. Lynette Mitchell? Any questions? If you have a document of your speech, Judy, if you have a document of your speech and would like the Board to see a copy of the rest of it? Okay, thank you. Welcome, Lynette.
Thank you. I serve on my local school board, so I know how much time and effort goes into some of this, so thank you for your time today. I don't have any prepared written remarks. I just was reading through the standards off of your website, and as a college graduate, mother of three, and grandmother of two, there were questions on there that we're expecting elementary students to answer that I could not answer. And the fact that we're looking at giving small children the information that you would need to answer the questions that these standards are looking to have answered is appalling to me. I hope that you will rethink the health standards that you're looking at and get back to something that is more biological. Thank you.
Thank you, Lynette. Cynthia Geddes. Welcome, Cynthia.
Good afternoon. My name is Cynthia Geddes, and I'm here speaking for myself. I'm a retired teacher, 34 years. I'm a mother. I'm a grandmother. I'm a farm property owner, and I'm a lifelong citizen of the state of Nebraska. The public schools of Nebraska were and continue to be here, and they're given the task of educating our youth. This was my goal for 34 years as a teacher, and just as today, time is always a factor. I can tell you from personal experience that I was not, nor were any of my students',parents' or board members, overly concerned or worried about many of the topics in this health education framework. We were and continue to be worried about teaching our youth basic skills in reading, language, math, so that they can be successful. We want them to be successful in life, and I know of no district in this state where all the students are at or above grade level in these basic skills. Let's have our schools use their time, because this is always in short supply, to educate our students so they can be successful, so they can be happy and be productive, and not end up in our legal system, as they tell us that many or most of our incarcerated individuals are there because they lack these basic skills to be successful. Let's make our students successful. One of the speakers earlier talked about that she had dealt with a number of the students here, and it was a substantial number here in Carney. When my sister asked her sitting next to her, "How much is substantial?", she said 20. I don't know what the population of the schools in Carney is, but I have a hearing impaired grandchild that's in Carney, and I'm betting that there's probably more than 20 hearing impaired grandchildren in Carney public schools. I don't expect them to stop the curriculum from the reading and the writing and the math, to teach everybody sign language, or to teach them how the ear functions. Before using our time and going off task to do other activities such as these health standards you have, I suggest that our schools are here to teach the basic skills first. Let's have them focus on that and use their time to teach the basic skills to our children of Nebraska. Thank you.
Thank you, Cynthia. Point of clarification?
Thank you. You said you were a teacher?
Yes, I was.
What grade? I just wonder what grade you taught?
Actually, I taught K through 12. The first seven years that I taught, I taught out in a rural school. I was the only teacher in that school, and I had grades K through 8. So I taught everything, from math to PE to health to reading, and we had great. In fact, I still communicate with a number of my students who have kids that have now graduated. After that, I went into the public school where I lived, and I taught for 27 more years, and I had their special ed program. I started out, and I had the whole K through 12 program. Later on, it became too much, and one of my student teachers actually said, "I'll stay and I'll teach the K six, but I can't handle the older kids." So for the last several years, I had the 7 through 12, and then I also had junior high, or not junior high, I had all their concessions and cheerleaders and, you know, what all the teachers have. But yeah, I dealt with a number of students, parents, and yeah, I ran the, one of the few that probably ran the gamut of K through 12 during their teaching career, so thank you.
Thank you. We should clap for her.
Jacob. Jacob Reiter, Reader. Susan Big. Susan Big. We will go on to our last, close to our last group. Dorothy Renter. Merkades Demartowski. I know I slaughtered that. Beverly Williams. Mark Bartonek. Mark Bartonek? Greg Swinney? Jake Weiss? Mary Henning? I've lost track. Pardon me? Dorothy Renter? Mercedes Demertowski?
Mercedes. There's Mercedes.
There she is. Right up to the microphone.
Okay, hello, everybody.
Welcome. Who do we have with us?
Yeah, okay, let's get him on these shoulders. Okay, hello? My name is Mercedes Demertowski. I'm the Secretary of the Tri-Cities Libertarian Party of Nebraska. I also ran for Nebraska State Legislature District 37 last— I'm out of breath, and I have a really cute top on my head. I'm here today to speak to you about why we need this. I was born in 1990 to a teenager mother. She was 16 when she had me. They asked her to drop out of school. She didn't. She had choices. She ju- she had adoption, she had abortion, and she chose to kept me. She had choices. As a child, I was raped and sexually molested because of the Franklin scandal. I was saved because of the school system. I was saved because I had someone safe I could talk to. I was removed, not removed, from the situation I was in. I was given the tools to protect myself. I was able to tell someone what was happening to me because half of my family made sure I was educated in my bodily anatomy. Because of that, I was able to stand up for myself as a child against my abusers. I myself broke the cycle because I was enabled to do so. My daughter is the age in which these people want to groom her. I know because they are trying to come around and do it. We need this. I am 30 years old, and I am a victim of this. I'm tired of it. I'm tired of watching it, tired of the children getting lost in the system because of it. I'm tired of the lack of education around it. I'm a mom, and it's Mother's Day. I have my daughter sitting on my shoulders because I don't have safe childcare for her in this area. That's all I have to say.
Thank you, Mercedes. Any points of clarification? And what is your daughter's name?
Her name is Cora May. She's named after her great-grandmother that came here and settled in a sought house.
She's a cutie. Thank you for bringing her. Mark Bartonek? Is that you? I slaughtered your name, Mark. I know I did.
Not the first time, and it won't be the last.
Well, no one usually spells my last name correctly.
Well, this is a tough act to follow. Does anybody want to get up on my shoulders? You know, I, I don't— You know, you've heard a lot of both sides today. I, I, some I agreed with, some I totally disagree with. It's hard, hard choices. I, I guess personally, I fail to see how these standards could possibly prevent some of the sad stories that we've heard. You, you mentioned my last name. I, I went through school where I was constantly tortured and abused mentally and physically, not sexually. I don't know how anybody could have a standard, you know, health-wise or whatever, that would have prevented that. I could tell you a long, sad sob story that includes suicide attempts. I'm not sure that has a place in this conversation. But what I do have is I, I'll confess, I did not read all the proposed standards. I mean, there's just too much there to try to address point by point. But in reading it, I had two emotions. One was sadness, and the other was anger. I was sad because anybody would think it's proper to expose our very young to sexually explicit content in the name of education. I was angry because anyone would think it's proper to expose our very young to sexually explicit content in the name of education. Children are our most vulnerable citizens, and they're in need of proper nurturing and development. Sexualizing the young is hardly the hallmark of society seeking to protect their young. We live in a society with very few moral constraints. It's no wonder that in this vacuum of morality, that human life is held so cheaply that mass shootings and child sexual exportation, exploitation are commonplace. I strongly oppose the proposed changes and ask that the Board—
Time, Mark. Thank you.
—do the right thing and reject them. Thank you.
Thank you.
It's your fault, Mark, that I didn't get that one up there.
Pardon?
It's your fault that I didn't get the one up there longer, as long as it should have been.
It's my fault?
Listening.
Well, I could go on and on and on.
And I quite keep on listening, too.
Thank you.
Thank you. Jake Weiss? You can correct me.
That's fine.
Welcome, Jake.
Hi, my name is Dr. Jake Weiss, and I am a professor of mathematics and statistics at UNK. I am not here in any professional capacity, though I'm here as a parent, but I can't get away from some numbers, so I want to speak about the Protect Nebraska Children Coalition that claims to have almost 11,000 members, and did a little quick math, and that's about half a percent of the population of Nebraska, whereas, according to the ACLU, there are 67,000 Nebraskans who identify as LGBTQ. That's over six times that, and that number is surely low. I just think that the best way that we can protect our children is to educate them, and these new, new policies and curriculum, I think, are wonderful. You know, people are saying that they want to have the ability to educate their, their kids at home, and that's fine. You can educate them, but, you know, the fact is, a lot of their education is ignoring the fact that these people are out there. You know, there are gay and bisexual youth in school, and there are transgender youth in school. In fact, my son is transgender. My wife was up here earlier and, and talked about that. And I wanted to mention, if these are age-appropriate, I have a four-year-old daughter, and she completely understands that she has an aunt and uncle who live together and are not married. She understands that her friend has two moms and no dad, and she understands that her brother, who was assigned female at birth, is a boy in his heart and in his mind. And she has, she's four years old, she has no problem understanding that, and, you know, I think that's what we need for our kids. Thank you.
Thank you, Jake. Points of clarification? Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Okay. We're nearing the end. I have Mary Henning?
Yes.
Carolyn McCurry? Reverend Tyler Hopmeyer? And Andy Forsberg? Mary?
Thank you.
Welcome.
Number one, thank you for sticking around, people. This is pretty nice over the noon hour like this. My name is Mary Henning. I am a grandmother, of course, a mother too, but, from Carney, Nebraska, and I've been listening to this all morning, and I've heard a lot of opposition to what you're doing. And I think the main thing is, what would happen if this was faith-based curriculum? And we taught people to love one another and not to be so explicit about this. I think our schools should teach reading, writing, arithmetic. I don't think they need to teach sexual things. I didn't learn that till I was out of college and married, for heaven's sakes, you know? I, I think it's good that we understand that people are people. I taught my children a long time ago, you don't look at a person on the outside, you look at them on the inside. And I think so many times today, we forget to look at the soul of somebody instead of how they're acting sometimes. And I would hope that we, as parents, would have that, and grandparents, have that right to teach our children that these things are good for about everybody, but teach them faith-based things. We've lost that in our, our lives today, and I think we need to go back to that. Thank you.
Time. Thank you, Mary.
Questions?
Carolyn McCurry? Welcome, Carolyn.
Thank you. My name is Carolyn McCurry. I was born and raised in central Nebraska on a farm. I went to elementary school, one remote country school, K through 8th grade, and I've been married to my husband Jim for 46 years. We raised our three grown married children together. Two became special education teachers in Nebraska, and one is an Air Force pilot instructor and serving as a major in the United States Air Force. I am a retired elementary teacher after teaching for 36 years. Having named, having earned a master's degree in education from Done College, which is a well-known program for education, I have always been an advocate for children and parents. Notice, I didn't include teachers or administrators, so I didn't always get along with those. Anyway, in one of my graduate classes, I learned that the reasoning part of a child's brain does not fully develop until they are 20, and for some, even longer. Your standards do not coincide with the development of children. Your standards are not health education, but sex education. I believe that parents should be in charge of that, and if they don't know how to do it, then they can get somebody outside the school to help them. I'm totally against the local, state Board of Education dictating, and federal dictating these standards on teachers in a one-size-fits-all fashion. Who knows and loves their children best? Not any Board of Education or group of liberal teachers. I ask that you listen to the people in your decisions-making concerning these standards. You, as a Board, represent the majority after listening to all the speeches and response that the majority here does not support your standards. Thank you.
Thank you, Carolyn. Points of clarification? Jacqueline?
I feel like I just have to be fair and ask you where you taught, too.
I taught, you only know, I taught in Council Bluffs. My husband was a salesman. I could, taught in Council Bluffs at a larger school. I taught in, let's see, let me think, I gotta go down. Grand Island, Wood River, Ansley, and my last 10 years were in Lexington, Nebraska, with the immigrant fam- families who I love and I appreciate, and those 10 years were my most challenging and most rewarding time in my life. I did not retire because I didn't love children and education. I retired because I can't deal with the way our system is treating children in a one-size-fits-all model with scripted materials. I am angry right now, but I'm not angry at you. I'm just frustrated. I have seven beautiful grandchildren, and my children are all still married, and they raise those children, and Jim and I worked together to raise our children to have a moral fiber that fits with the way I believe people should be treated. Please, please, don't adopt these standards. It breaks my heart to know that my little six-year-old grandchildren are having to face learning all about sex and oral sex. I don't know what time they're gonna have to learn about oral sex, but is this what you would want for your grandchildren? Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Carolyn. And last but not least, Andy Forsberg. Welcome, Andy. Somebody's gotta be last.
Okay, thank you. Since the federal government began its major contraception program in 1970, unwed pregnancies have increased 87% among 15 to 19-year-olds. Abortions among teens rose 67%. Unwed births went up 61%. Viti has affected a generation of young people. Adams City High School in Commerce County, Colorado, started giving out condoms and other innovative programs. Three years later, the birth rate rose 31% above the national average. In Washington DC, at a, an African-American school, in seven, in a seven-year period, only one out of 400 female students was found to be pregnant while under a certain abstinence-based program. Experience teaches that, teaches us that the right kind of abstinence-based sex ed works while condom distribution can backfire. Please oppose these standards. Thank you.
Thank you, Andy. Any points of clarification? Thank you, Andy.
Thank you.
Microphone.
Thank you, Andy. This concludes our public comment time. Agenda item 2.3, written public comment. We have written public comments submitted from several members of the public. The written public documents are linked in two documents in the Spark data system. These written comments have been made available to the Board members prior to this meeting. It is now 1:06, and at this point in time, we will recess for the Board to have lunch. Okay, we have resumed following lunch. We are now on agenda item three, the Commissioner's report. Commissioner, I'm gonna let you do 3.1, 3.2, 3.3, and 3.4. It's all yours.
All right. So, first of all, just thanks for this morning and being able to listen to the various comments. I will, I will note, we actually posted some of the kind of points of clarification on Spark around some of the common themes that, that, you know, that folks are kind of confusing, I guess, when, when they're doing that. So thanks also for your questions of folks to kind of help, help provide that clarification. One thing, before I get started too far, I want to recognize Steve Milliken. We don't have anything formal here, but Steve Milliken, of course, has been deputy for a long time now. I don't even know how long, but Steve is actually retiring. He asked me to re, that he could retire like a year ago, and I said no, so we finally are gonna let that happen. But thank you, Steve, for your service. I know it's your last Board meeting. We try to make it memorable for you, so. I will jump to the rules. You can see the hearing drafts that are approved by the Commissioner and the public hearing scheduled, and that's on your, in your Spark meeting. You can see that we have, well, essentially, Rule 1, Rule 2, Rule 28, and the repeal of Rule 29, and hearing scheduled. My computer monitor is really small for me here all of a sudden, so it looks like June 1st and June 22nd, we have hearings scheduled for, I guess it's Rule 2 on June 1st, and then on June 22nd, Rule 28. So, so anyway, that's there for your, for your awareness. Now I gotta go on to the, the next one. Oh, I'm sorry, I forgot to do the reminder on consent agenda, so we'll have a consent agenda up, and I— So we'll have a consent agenda up, and I don't believe we've had any, no items to be removed from consent agenda, so we'll take that up in normal order. I guess board operations information. So Ryan, is there anything you'd like to share? No, I'm sorry, there he is, all right. And then I wanted to just, there's a document within my report there about some of the ESER and various federal funds. A lot of credit to our team. Certainly Jen Udomark and Lane Carr both were kinda helping put this summary together. I'm not gonna go through it in great detail. Certainly, we can send it to you by email, too, so you can see that. Actually, very nice on this is that they included some links. So actually, I think I will email it to you, so you have it in that format as well, so you can kind of look at the various funds. Obviously, some of the other agenda items that we have today are in relation to where we're deciding to try to invest funds to address these particular federal, oh, I'm gonna say funds again, I'm sorry about that. So anyway, but certainly, some of our intent and where we're trying to go with it is described within this particular document. So with that, I think I will be brief, because that might be best for us at the moment. I think that's all that we have, so I'll turn it back to you, President Nichols.
Thank you, Commissioner.
Microphone.
Thank you, Commissioner. Agenda item 4, special presentations and discussions. We have none today. Agenda item 5, the President's report, and that would be me. I'm just gonna cut to the chase about, it's the first full week in May, and it constitutes Teacher Appreciation Week. So I hope that, if you haven't done a shout-out to your friends who are educators throughout the state that you know, give it a thought. It goes through tomorrow. Wednesday was the big day. But the great thing about Teacher Appreciation Week is that they get to soak up all the love and fun from people that appreciate our teachers. And with the tough year that it's been through this pandemic, they have done tremendous work. They had no manual to work from to tell them how to work with kids, how to get kids to trust them if they had to work remotely. So they've had a long year. And on top of it being Teacher Appreciation Week, with it being May, it's a month of celebrations when it comes to our schools. Graduation, graduation not just of high school students, but of kindergarteners, sometimes elementary grades. There's a 5th or 6th grade graduation. So it's just a time of a lot of celebration, family time. And then school ending. Well, for most schools. I think some kind of, maybe in the Omaha area, metro area, get out early June. But, you know, the end of a year. And to think about the year that we have had with the pandemic. And I go back to all the work that our schools have done this year in keeping the schools open almost all year long for our students. That is huge. So a big shout-out to our schools and our families that support our schools across the state. That ends my report. Agenda item 6, the consent agenda. Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda? Patty?
I move to approve the consent agenda.
Do I have a second?
I second that motion.
Okay. The motion was made by Patty, seconded by Patsy. Per board policy, there is no discussion on the motion to approve the consent agenda. Andrea, please call the roll.
Morrison? Yes. Neary?
Yes.
Fricki?
Yes.
Nichols?
Yes.
Stevens?
Yes.
Goobles?
Yes.
Cojons?
Yes.
Tim? Seven yes, one absent.
Motion passes. Thank you, Andrea. Agenda item 7, standing committee reports. Agenda item 7.1, the Policy Committee. With Pat being gone, do I have someone from the Policy Committee to provide the report? Patty, would you do that for us?
Thank you. The Policy Committee continues discussion of the reorganization of the State Board Policy Reference Manual. And the committee really has determined that our first task is to identify and to define bylaws. These are just possible codes. But bylaws would be BLW, Board Operating Policies, BOP, Agency Management Policies, AMP, and then Position Statements, PS, and Model Policies, MP. State Board Bylaw B12, Policy Development, is still being reviewed and discussed in conjunction with the reorganization. And the committee will make appropriate changes to this bylaw as the reorganization progresses. The committee also discussed State Board Bylaw B10, Hearing Officers. The committee will continue discussion of staff's proposed revisions at our June Policy Committee meeting. The committee began our four-year review of State Board Bylaw B8, which is Parliamentary Procedures, Rules of Order, and State Board Bylaw B15, Board Minutes. This concludes the Policy Committee report.
Thank you, Pat. Is there any discussion regarding the Policy Committee's report? Robin?
I think it was, yeah, it was on the Hearing Officer. And I noticed that there was a change in there. And I guess it had to do with wanting to make sure that attorneys were the ones who ran that. Was this, and you may or may not know the answer, but was this previous practice, even though it wasn't in writing, that that's what we had always done, and so you just decided to put it into writing? Or was there an issue, I guess, would be my question?
There was not an issue. It was included for clarification. It reflects what has been the practice. Jaclyn, do you want to add anything to that?
No. It was, it, there was not a requirement that a hearing officer be an attorney, and there was not a requirement that it be an outside or an external hearing officer. But since the department had been following that, we just decided we would add it to the policy to make it clear going forward.
Thank you. And if I'm not mistaken, was there, you're creating a list, or there was a list of people who, or of attorneys who were willing to do that? I'm trying to recall. This isn't gonna cause any shortage or anything like that. Okay, that sounds good. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Okay, moving on to agenda item 7.2, the Legislative Committee. Robin, please provide a report.
Give me just a quick moment. I'm gonna, I wanna get that, make sure I've got that pulled up on my electronic agenda here. If there is one thing that I wanna, want us to do, and I think different times we've asked for homework and that kind of thing, the Commissioner and Brian have been working with senators or want to work with senators so that we can meet, we being the Legislative Committee, can meet with the Chair and the Co-Chair of the Education Committee and that sort of thing, and maybe other people involved in education policy or legislation. And so I know you get tired of hearing me say this, but at 7.2, it would be the area of 2021, 2022 legislative and regulatory priorities, State Board draft, and 4/23/21. Pay, try to pull that up. And we really want to get that updated, because if we're going to start visiting right away with legislators, we want to have that document as updated as possible. So I know all the Legislative Committee members are going to be working on that, but we want to make sure that the four people who are not members of the Legislative Committee give us input on that as well. And I don't, I can't remember, and I'm looking to my committee or Commissioner, was there a date or a time that we wanted to have that information? Like, was it the June Board Meeting or anything like that? I can't remember. Do you think it was a June Board Meeting? So I guess what you're saying is, get that in, anything, as you read through that, that you can, that you want to update, we really want to hit the ground running, visiting with the Education Chair and the Co-Chairs, Walls and Moorfield. We really think that this document is crucial. Other than that, I mean, we could talk about the legislative bills and where they are, but all of that information is also included in our agenda here. So if you have a particular one that you're interested in, that all that information should be there for you. And with that, I refer to my colleagues as to anything else that they might want to add, and obviously, the Commissioner. If there's something that you would want to make sure that we bring forth. Okay. Maureen?
Yeah, I just, it's my understanding that this week, LB 996 broadband internet bill that I believe we supported was passed without any opposition, and the Governor has already signed it. It already has an emergency clause, so it begins right away, correct?
You're giving me information that is new, but I will assume that my President has all of that down to a science, because she usually calls me regularly and making sure that I'm doing things correctly.
Well, I double-checked on it last night. And what I not, what I didn't understand was, is it, was it $20 million put out or $40 million put out? Do you know?
No, I don't. And I'll look to the Commissioner, or I don't know if Brian, is he online with us? And maybe they could update us as well. I can say this, that that is a very exciting thing. And we've heard about it at the national level. We've been talking about it and struggling with it for a long time at the state level. And that's very exciting information. Thanks, Maureen.
Absolutely, yes.
Anybody know about the 20 to 40?
Brian's on.
Okay, oh, Brian is there. Thanks, Brian. Come to our, come to my rescue.
Good afternoon, everyone. Brian Halsted, Deputy Commissioner. I believe the bill that President Nichols is referring to is LB 338, which did have the emergency clause. It is on the second page of your list of bill documents, so it has gone into effect in that regard. The other one is the Transportation Committee's priority bill, and that one does include additional funding for broadband. I don't believe the Transportation Committee bill has yet made it to final reading, but it's upcoming and clearly something we're hoping the Legislature enacts. Obviously, the mainline budget bill that the Legislature adopted has money there for that bill. So in that regard, that's the two biggest pieces of broadband or internet bills this session.
It's just exciting news for, especially our rural areas, what's going on, and something we've wanted for a long time from the State Board.
Since Brian is on there, this is a great time to see if anybody else has anything we could quiz him about or stump him, if at all possible. Obviously, that's not possible. Brian, anything else that you think maybe we should be aware of?
No, I mean, obviously, the Legislature is approaching the end of its session. This morning, the Speaker informed the body that they do not intend to take all 90 days for this session, and that they're working through next week's select-file debate on what he's calling spending bills and revenue bills of the state of Nebraska. So we'll watch next week. There are several bills we are proponents of that hopefully will come up and move to final reading. So lots of stuff going on and lots of late nights between now and the 1st of June.
Patsy?
Brian, I couldn't read it this morning.
Microphone.
Microphone.
Sorry. Looking at, instead of talking in the microphone. I noticed in the paper this morning, I didn't have time to read it like I usually do, but you reported on it in the Legislative Committee about Senator Lenihan and, the name's gonna go out of my head right now, and the Education Committee that they were trying to put together. And you said that they were making some kind of an agreement. And they must have come to an agreement, but you were obviously worried about what that was gonna be. Do you know what it was? What did she have to do?
I think you are referencing LB 132, which is Senator DeBoer's priority bill that would have created, or still does, propose to create an independent school finance review commission. But apparently, the compromise is the bill yesterday moved to select-file in the same language as introduced, but Senator DeBoer and Lenihan were going to work on an amendment so that the bill only appointed state senators to this commission to review school finance, legislation, and funding. So we have to wait until it comes back up to see what the select-file debate will be on that amendment. But the concept is the commission would be composed only of senators in the Legislature and not be an independent body appointed by the Governor or others.
It looked, it looked like the headline said that they had come to some agreement, Senator Lenihan and Senator DeBoer. But that's not possible, right, yet?
Well, they've come to an agreement as to whom the commission should have on it. As to whether the Legislature is going to agree to who the senators are on that is yet to be seen.
Yeah. Okay, thank you. That helps.
Unless I hear someone say differently, I think that ends our report.
Thank you, Robin. Thank you, Brian.
Yes, thank you.
Okay. Agenda item 7.3, the Commissioner's Appraisal Committee, and that would be me. The report from the Appraisal Committee is that all board members completed the Commissioner's performance evaluation for 2020, 2021. The appraisal report, which summarizes the board members' ratings and comments, was sent to the board and the Commissioner on April 23rd, 2021. The Commissioner again received an overall rating of highly effective, which is the highest rating on the scale. The other part was the Commissioner's employment contract was reviewed by the Attorney General's Office, and some minor changes are recommended. A vote on the contract itself will take place at the June business meeting. And that concludes the Appraisal Committee report. Do I have any discussion from anyone on the report? Deborah.
Were the Attorney General's changes anything of significance, or just?
We're going to talk about that in a little bit.
Oh, we aren't, thank you.
You're one step ahead of me, Deborah, which is good.
Okay.
Anyone else? Okay. The board has completed the Commissioner's performance review. The Commissioner was evaluated on nine performance standards as well as four performance goals. We will have a public discussion on the Commissioner's performance. As a precursor to that, I will entertain a motion that the State Board go into executive session to discuss the Commissioner's job performance, appraisal results, and the terms of the Commissioner's employment contract as necessary to protect the public interest and to prevent needless injury to the Commissioner's reputation. Do I have a motion?
Yes, Madam Chair. I move that the State Board go into executive session to discuss the Commissioner's job performance, appraisal results, and terms of the Commissioner's employment contract as necessary to protect the public interest and to prevent needless injury to the Commissioner's reputation.
Do I have a second? Patty?
I'll second.
If the motion was made by Patsy and seconded by Patty, is there any discussion on the motion? Robyn.
The motion, which is appropriate, by the way, may indicate that we're going to do something about the Commissioner's reputation. And I guess I want to go on record that anything that I might say about that, I probably would be able to say in public. And I think the Commissioner would be okay with that. But I understand the motion, and I understand the purpose behind it. But I want to make sure that from my perspective, nothing that I will say would be something that would be out of the ordinary in a public conversation.
Any other discussion? Seeing none, Andrea, please call the roll.
Morrison?
Yes.
Neary?
Yes.
Cojones?
Yes.
Fricki?
Yes.
Goobles?
Yes.
Nichols?
Yes.
Stevens?
Yes.
Tim? Seven yes, one absent.
Motion passes. The board will now go into executive session only for the purpose of discussing the Commissioner's job performance for the reasons described in the motion. Is there a motion to come out of executive session?
Yes, Madam President. There is a motion. I move that the State Board go, come out of executive session where we discuss the Commissioner's job performance appraisal results and terms of the Commissioner's employment contract as necessary to protect him and his interest from needless injury to his reputation and to share a group hug and sing kumbaya.
Is there a second? Is there a second? Lisa, motion made by Patsy and seconded by? Was that you, Lisa? Thank you. Okay. Is there any discussion on the motion to come out of executive session? Seeing none, Andrea, please call the roll.
Goobles?
Yes.
Morrison?
Yes.
Neary?
Yes.
Cojones?
Yes.
Fricki?
Yes.
Nichols?
Yes.
Stevens?
Yes.
Tim? Seven yes, one absent.
Motion passes. The board will now discuss the Commissioner's job performance, including any commendations or any concerns or suggestions for future development. Are there any questions before we begin? Okay, discussion. Any discussion from anyone? Robyn?
Thank you, Commissioner.
We didn't hear you.
Thank you, Commissioner. Good job.
Anyone else? Patsy?
Ditto.
Anyone else? Lisa, I see your microphone on.
Oh, that was a mistake.
Patty?
Thank you very much for your extraordinary leadership.
Deborah?
I wanted to just say the same, and that truly grateful to serve at this time under your leader, alongside your leadership and with your amazing team, and thank you.
Anyone else? And yes, Commissioner, I so appreciate your vision, your continued vision, and your continued communication with stakeholders across the state and all of our administrators and districts. Thank you for the time you put in. Thank you. Anyone else? Okay. Thank you for that discussion. Now we will move to the topic of the Commissioner's employment contract. The board may contract with the Commissioner for a maximum of a three-year period per state statute 79-315. The Commissioner's current contract was approved by the board last June for a three-year period of July 1, 2020 to June 30, 2023. The Commissioner receives the same benefits as other state employees. The appraisal committee recommends a one-year extension of the Commissioner's contract to six, to June 30, 2024. Other proposed changes to the contract include salary increases of 2% on July 1, 2021, and July 1, 2022, which mirror the negotiated increase for the Department of Education employees. Retention of language regarding an additional 40 hours of vacation time to use or lose within the next contract year. The board will vote on revisions to the Commissioner's contract at the June meeting. This concludes our discussion of the items related to the Commissioner's performance. Is there any other discussion from the board regarding these contract, his contract? Seeing none, we move to Agenda Item 7.4, the AQUEST Teaching and Learning and Serving Domain Committee. Lisa, do you have a report for us?
Yes, I do, Madam Chair.
Microphone?
Help. Yes, I do, Madam President. Before I begin the report, I would like to have the Commissioner talk about points of clarification that we had during our meeting, and so if you would do so, Commissioner, I'd appreciate it.
Yeah, and what Lisa is talking about, the points of clarification on our standards draft so far, we kind of hear some common misperceptions about what's in the standards, what's not. We saw some of that, I think, obviously, as we talked through it. So we've actually posted a points of clarification. I think when the committee met, we didn't know exactly how we would handle that, but we have gone ahead and posted this points of clarification to let folks know that the State Board's not immediately voting on the health education standards either this month, next month, or until after, there's already been a second draft. Making sure that folks understand it's not written by activists, it's written by folks from Nebraska. Making sure that folks understand that, you know, certain outside groups weren't part of that process, per se, right? And so just an opportunity for us to kind of address some of those commonly held maybe misunderstandings or misbeliefs about what were in the standards. And so we'll begin to talk more about what that is, we'll share more of that in a kind of a communications overall, and that's what the committee discussed. So that's already up on our Spark site, but also will be available on our website around the health standards.
Thank you, Commissioner. We have probably the lengthiest Teaching and Learning Committee report that I've had since I've been on the board, so that's why I'm taking off my mask. It's fogging up my glasses. The Committee on Teaching and Learning and Serving reports on only one action item, the committee received recommendation from NDE staff to approve the accreditation for educational service units for the '21-'22 school year, all 17 of them. The committee recommends approval of this motion. Additionally, the committee received updates related to potential changes to Rule 24, endorsement revisions, the Nebraska Council on Teacher Education Policy revisions, Bellevue University's Education Preparation Program approval status, statewide assessment vendors' contracts, and the process for revisions to the English Language Arts content area standards. In addition, the committee also received an update from the Commissioner and NDE staff on the health education standard process. The committee discussed the proposed draft to the health standards. The discussion began by reviewing the goals of the health education, health standards, and last month, the committee recommended that the NDE began to analyze the public input received. The committee previewed a preliminary draft of the qualitative data analyses, emails between March 10 and March 29, which included 2,580 emails. The analyses also included open-ended survey data received between March 10 and April 26, which included 9,490 responses. The top five themes from the data analyses include family, family and parents, gender, gender identity, to scrap the standards, remove them, were the words used, and community. The committee recommended to analyze the additional emails and to analyze the quantitative data from the public input survey. The committee also recommended that the public input survey close next week so that data analysis can be completed to inform draft two. The standards input email will remain active, even though the survey is down, the email will remain active, and members of the public are encouraged to send feedback on draft one to that email address. Last month, the committee recommended, the Commissioner outlined the plan to develop a draft two. The committee discussed the types of revisions that could be made for draft two, and the types of changes discussed include changes responsive to common themes or concerns about specificity, developmental appropriateness, and delineation of parent-family responsibilities, structural changes, which are changes to the structure of the standards, indicators, and strands, and so on, removal and/or additions, which are changes that could include the removal or additions of strands, topics, words, phrases, et cetera, rewording, which are changes that could be, could include rewording topics, using different words or phrases that might be confusing or misunderstood, changing those. NDE and the standards writing team will begin work this month on draft two with a goal of draft two being publicly available mid to late summer. Once draft two is available, there'll be a second public survey to give input, it'll open up, and the committee recommended that NDE simplify, simplify the survey according to comments that we received, and so the survey design will change, thus making it easier for the general public to complete. This concludes the Teaching, Learning, and Serving Committee report.
Thank you, Lisa. Is there any discussion?
Mike.
Thank you, Lisa. Is there any discussion related to the information that Lisa just shared? Deborah?
Yeah, thank you for your leadership and for everybody that serves on that committee. I was very thankful I wasn't on that committee. Just kidding. But I just read the points of clarification, that's really helpful. Thank you. I'm glad that will be an external document. I am curious, I process always, it's helpful for me to understand that, and so I guess I'd like to know, will the writing committee be all together in one space to have a discussion, either face-to-face or online? And will you be bringing the advisory committee together before the next draft is presented to us? I'm just curious.
Yeah, one of the things that I think, maybe a little bit of a lesson from the first draft, is how to kind of ensure that there is a more of a complete review by all of the writers and those that are on the advisory group. I think we've also heard from some other groups that have an interest in at least providing some additional insights. And I, again, we're going to try to work on that process and make sure that that works better, and make sure that it has a broad set of stakeholders involved in it, but even more important, that everybody that's been so dedicated to working on that, that they can kind of see it holistically and provide feedback as part of that process, too. I don't know exactly if it's like in one room or Zoom, you know what I mean? But I think we're looking for feedback from all of those folks, as well as looking at the feedback that we've received from the public.
Thank you.
Jacqueline?
So same kind of question that Deborah had. Two parts. On the points of clarification, it says a writing team of Nebraska educators were selected from submitted applications. So can you tell me who decides or goes through the submitted applications and decides on who will be on the writing team and who won't? Can you tell me historically, has there been board members as part of the writing team or collaborating, or are board members able to be on that team? And also, going forward, as we convene again to look at the second draft, who will be the people who decide if they open that up for more applicants or not?
Yeah, our process, I don't know, historically, I can give you a little bit of my perspective on that, and I might be a little off on what's been done in the past, but generally, it's opened up for educators across the state, so teachers. There's actually a provision within statute that teachers in the profession should help write our standards, and so there's an application that goes out. Our team reviews that application. We're looking for folks that meet all the different content areas typically. It's not always, we often might have to go recruit additional folks to be part of those writing teams, right? Just depends on the, how many people have submitted. I don't know that I know precisely if, like, folks who put their names in, you know, what the individual examination is, but we look kind of for different sizes of schools, different types of schools. I do think, I do believe we had some non-public school teachers that were part of that process as well. So those types of things are considered certainly as that comes together. I don't think we have a history of changing what that writing team was in the midstream, but I think it might behoove us a little bit to look at the possibility of bringing others into that. I'm trying to remember all your questions. Jacqueline, board members, I don't know if we've had a history of board members, per se, writing it. What I would say in process improvement-wise is that we'd be bringing that to the committee before there was anything else of the committee, the Teaching and Learning Committee, at the very least, would be able to look at that before we released a second draft. There's the dynamic of once, once we have a second draft and when it becomes a public document, and all those different things that we try to make sure that we consider, too, so.
Madam Chair, I just wanted to state as a State Board member, and even though I'd be qualified to apply for the English Language Arts standards, probably even the social studies standards with my geography background, I would not feel comfortable being on the writing team. I, as a committee member, as a State Board member, I almost think that's not advantageous to be on the board and voting, and also have been a part of the process that created the standard. So that's just my personal opinion.
Jacqueline?
Yeah, sorry, I, there were a couple of my questions that weren't answered, so I just went.
There were a couple of my questions that weren't answered, so I just wanted to...
Yeah, I thought I maybe lost a couple along the way, so...
No, that's okay. So my question was, once we receive, or the Department of Education receives applications for someone to be on the writing team, who at the Department of Education makes the decision to determine who will be the writers?
Yeah. And our team, basically, I mean, so underneath Cory Epler, for instance, and then the content area person that would be doing that, they review it for the expectations of those various, you know, regional size of school, appropriate content area. Again, I don't think we get so many applicants for that that they turn very many people away, but I don't know for certain, so... But essentially, it's there. It's not a decision. It's a decision that's left to the academic officer typically in that direction, so...
Deborah, then Patty.
Just when you guys were discussing, another thought came to my mind that if we do another list of points of clarification, I'm hoping that we can clarify, because I heard this a couple times today, that people think that there were not any parents on that writing committee, and so I hope that we can make sure that people do understand that there were parents on that writing committee, because I Googled each and every person before we approved that list. So thank you.
Patty.
I'm going back to the question about board members serving on writing teams. We have ultimate final approval of standards. It would be a conflict for us to be part of the construction of those standards.
And I just want to share to that very point, too. And it's one of those things I'd love to kind of talk about in general standards practice and where we go in the long run, too. Because even like, I try to keep that distance a little bit like where I feel like my role is versus interjecting and not, you know, not being in the wrong place on that. At the same point in time, I want to make sure I'm in the right places, too. And so all of those things are considerations, I think, things we're learning now. We've really trusted that standards writing process, and it's actually worked very well for us in past content areas. And so in this moment in time, it's worthy of that reflection to figure out how we can do it better.
Jacqueline.
I feel like I always get in these situations where my statements get, people respond to them, and it's kind of not the context I was asking in. The reason for which I'm asking is particularly with these health standards, I feel like I have been inundated with a ton of information from people about how they feel about the standards. And it seems counterintuitive for me for the writing team to get back together and then bring something to the board, and then we say, "Well, this is what we heard," or "This was the feedback that we got," and we had no way to pass that information that we received as individuals along to the writing team. And so that was more of the line of questioning of where I was going with that, not saying, "I want to write anything. I don't want to write anything." But it's more about how do we make sure that we've captured all of the information and the voices that have come to us so that we don't have to keep going back and forth because we vote something down based on what we've heard from constituents?
Right. No, actually, I think that's a really great point. As we do the feedback review, and I'm making this up as I go a little bit, but I think it's a super great point, that what I'd like to be able to do is bring you back that full feedback to the board, so you can also review that and go, "Hey, look, I also heard this or that." And so that would give you a chance to review that before the staff and writing team, you know, go too far down that path. In fact, very much what our conversation was yesterday, I was trying to get a sense of what direction do I give the writing team and our staff, and I appreciate that one because I'll make sure to include the board's review of the feedback and feeling as if the feedback that you heard is represented in that. I think that's a great point, so thank you.
We had mentioned something like that yesterday, you know, getting from the whole board input, so... Any other questions? Yes, well, am I supposed to recognize?
Patty. No. Patty.
Just a comment that although this has been a somewhat painful process, the standards development process is working the way that it was intended to work. Does that mean there is no room for improvement? Of course, there's always room to improve a process, but it is working in the respect that we have received volumes of feedback. That feedback is being analyzed. The department is already thinking about and will soon start on a second draft, and they're basing that on feedback that they've received. So, you know, I think we just need to keep that perspective. It's not over. This is an iterative process, and it's going to continue for a while, but the process is working as intended to work.
Lisa.
One thing that, from the phone calls and emails that I received, Madam President, many of them weren't aware that there would be a second and possibly a third draft. So in the future, if we can just make sure upfront, there's more communication about the process, that here's input, and then from that input, a second draft, potentially a third, I would appreciate that.
And Lisa, I too feel the same, that it kind of got lost in the shuffle of things. And once I explained that to individuals, there was just a whole different feel.
Yeah.
And I got positive feedback and looking forward, because I would always say, "Please stay engaged." But Commissioner, I have a quick clarification for you, and I should have asked this in our committee meeting, but when a second draft does come before the committee first, if the committee says, "Hmm, we want to send this back now before we take it to the public," is that an option or not? That's one point I'm not clear on yet.
Yeah, I think so. Obviously, the committee will have the option to then either bring it forward or say, "Hey, do some more work on it before we bring it forward." So that would be my intent, yes.
Deborah.
Last month, you gave us time at the end of the meeting to kind of process and share what we heard, or where our minds were, that are we going to have that opportunity again today? And if not, then I just want to make a comment now during this discussion.
Not today.
No? Okay. Then I just wanted to say, just in regard to what you've put in your points of clarification, I just want to correct something I said earlier in the meeting in regard to this. And we kept hearing about CSE and CRT, and I made the statement that those are political terms, and that wasn't what I meant to say. I was a little flustered. And what I meant to say, that those were topics that are used in a political way and have been in a lot of the emails and phone calls that I've received. But I didn't mean that in general, they were political terms. And anyway, I just wanted to say, add that in. Thank you.
Patsy.
It was interesting to me today, all of the things that they thought were in the standards and that we knew were not in the standards. And this speaks to what you were talking about, Deborah, as well. And I just wanted to share experience that happened at the end of that discussion, because that might be some way, a place that we could improve the process as well. So one of the women who was in the audience came up and held up her phone and said, "Here is the place where it discusses the two teenagers and their experience in the classroom where they're supposed to do this curriculum, not standards, but curriculum." And so I said, "Well, may I see that?" So she shows it to me, and it's definitely not from NDE, not from the Department of Education, not our standards. And I said that to her, and she said, I said, "This isn't the standards. This is, it comes from this organization, not NDE." So I think there's a lot of information that's coming from different places, like pamphlets that are handed out at church and organizations, and people are reading those, thinking that that is the standards on NDE. And so I think Laine helped me get her to the right place, and she said, "Well, I'm going to read this now." And I said, "Well, I've read it several times, and I don't remember many of the things that people were saying that were in it today, being in it, in our standards." And so I don't know how we deal with that. I don't know if it's the accessibility of getting to the standards, or if it's (laugh) an airplane fly across the sky saying, "This is how you get to them." I don't know. But that is something that we need to deal with, so that they know just because they got it from these organizations or at church or whatever, that doesn't mean that it's in the standards.
Robin.
It's on, I think. No, it's not working.
It's on.
It's on.
It's on now.
You think?
It's green.
All right, good.
How do I do that? I'm hitting something I shouldn't be hitting. First of all, the conversations are fantastic that we're having. I really appreciate that. I started off with Lisa giving an outstanding summary of our discussion, and so I just really want to say that. And then, you know, I think of, I can't remember for sure, I think it was Patty who emphasized "process." And we get, we're getting some pretty, some pressure from, for pretty high spaces that said, what's the word? What do we use? Trash? Garbage? Do away with? Scrap! Scrap! There you go. I knew it'd come to me. We ought to scrap these. And then I hear the Commissioner say, or maybe it was Patty again, or everybody saying, "You know, the process is really kind of working. Ugly, messy, but it's really working." And so I just really appreciate that. And then I get this today from, even has our letter, is it, yeah, it's got our letterhead on it, and I just really like this stuff. I would have liked to have had it on everybody's seat and that sort of thing, because we do, was it Patty that asked the question? Patsy that asked the question about, "How can we do this? How can we get this out?" You know, and too many times, I hear, "We'll put it online." Great! I think that's fantastic. But I guess I'm going to challenge the Commissioner, or David, or whoever, that we ought to have something in every weekly paper, in every daily paper in the state of Nebraska that clarifies some of this, maybe starts with this. The next thing that I would recommend, that we write an article for every daily newspaper in the state, every weekly newspaper in the state, that talks a little bit about how this is not CSE, this is not CRT, or whatever, I hope I'm saying those right, but it is It's not some of the things that we said here. How many times did I hear Planned Parenthood? You know, on and on and on. We need to be proactive, or a little bit better reactive to these things. And that's what I guess, to try to help answer Patsy's question, "How do we do this?" Well, I think we, on a weekly basis, we get something out there in every daily and every weekly paper in the state of Nebraska.
Deborah.
I wanted to build on that and just make one more comment, you know, because CSE and CRT were brought up so much today. And one white woman made the comment that she has a preschooler at home and, you know, that her preschooler doesn't see race and that, you know, "Why are we implanting that information in her daughter's head?" And, you know, just making, anyway, I'm not quoting her very well, but her point was taken from a white person's perspective. And I, as she was speaking, I was thinking, and she talked a lot about critical race theory, and I was thinking about, I'm anti-Debbie to, well, at the time, he was three years old and in preschool, Alexander, and Alexander came home and told his mom that he learned that day that he was on the brown team and that there was a white team and a brown team. And I, and he was okay with it. I mean, it was, and his mom went on to, you know, just support that conversation in a way that was good for him. But it gave me the awareness that while a white child may not have that awareness around race, if you are a person of color, then it is very likely, even at the age of three years old, that, you know, being out in the community, that those are things that you are going to be more aware of. And I kind of thought the same thing about people in all demographics, you know. When we think about our equity lens, you know, we've often talked about how it's very easy to just consider the work we're doing from our, you know, white-centered position. And this has been a really helpful process to help me see these standards from other perspectives. Thank you.
Patty.
I'm going back to Robin's comments. I took the initiative to write. You could call it an editorial, you could call it a commentary piece. In some papers, it was published as a guest commentator, but I sent that out to, I believe it was 22 papers in my district. I don't know how many of them published, but I know that it was published fairly widely. And it was simply an explanation of the process and really trying to debunk, I guess I would say, some of the misconceptions that were coming to me. I had an opportunity, when people emailed, to respond to those individuals, and so it gave me a teaching moments with all of those. But I thought it was important to provide that information on a larger scale and to the people in my district. That piece has been very well received. I have gotten a number of comments back from people saying they truly appreciated information that gave them a better understanding of what the process is, as well as where the department is in the process. Because the reality is, you know, today, we have people who are still reacting to Draft One as though Draft One is the final draft. And I think it's unfortunate when, we want to hear them, right? But I think we're moving ahead of them, and I think then that becomes kind of a disconnect. It's like you were saying, Commissioner, that, you know, at some point, you have to cut off the comments for Draft One in order to get, make sure we have all of that data, so then we're actually moving toward Draft Two. So I guess, I guess I'm just saying, please, as individual board members, don't feel hesitant to take on the leadership, to do some of that work of... to take on the leadership, to do some of that work of informing our public.
Robin?
Great information. I actually did that. Unfortunately, I don't think my writing must be near as good as yours. I think I stirred the pot more than I, I really helped. But no, that's an excellent, excellent point. But I still go back to the department getting something out in a statewide communique, and not just one. Several brief ones, in my opinion, would work better. But I'm not the expert in that, but I challenge, I guess, the commissioner and David to come up with a really good statewide communication plan on this.
Jacquet. Then Patsy.
So I didn't know we were going to go into details about the standards again today, but since we're there. I will tell you, when I first got the sheet in front of us with the points of clarification, and I saw it say, "Draft Number One," I immediately hoped it was just a draft, and that we had not released it. And my reason for that is along the lines of what Robin and Patty have said, but it's important for us to get out the message about the health standards, but these points of clarification come off very defensive, like we're defending the standards. And if our, if we're here to listen to people, to see what their opinions are, and as one of the gentlemen said today, "I hope this isn't for show, I hope you're really listening," it's very difficult for me to say, "I'm listening to what you say," and then point up, put out a point of clarification that says, "This is not part of a worldwide plan to sexualize children." If in people's minds, that's what we're doing, and we're just responding and saying, "We're not doing this," we're not really educating them on what we are doing, or why this is important. And so it's not that I don't agree with a lot that's in our point of clarification, but I think part of it is, how do we get that message across? Or how do we, rather than say what something is not, I think our responsibility is to say what something is. What this is, is X. Or we, if we say, "This is based on evidence," or "This is based on research," maybe the paper shouldn't just say, "The proposed draft does include XYZ." We should point to where we got that from. Where is that study of what this is based on? Who was the doctor, or who, who was the educator who said, "I think that this is important," or "This is important because"? Just saying what something's not, or just telling people definitively, "This isn't what we're trying to do," well, they've already made up their mind, "This is what we're trying to do." And two other things that I would say I was really sensitive to today. I was referred to, or we were referred to as coloreds. That hurt, I still was reeling. And when someone said, "Well, you're, there are board members up there looking down at their phone," I did, because I was so upset. And, and so I hope that people understand that when we are still using those kind of words to describe people, we've got a long way to go. But we need to educate people about why something like that is not okay. And so I even heard us say, "Well, they believe." That's divisive. I don't look at everybody who showed up today as "they." It's us, we're all in this together. So I just think that going forward with the process, we really need to be careful with our words, the language that we choose, the tone that we choose, because that is going to dictate how this process goes forward. And even with, like I said, these points of clarification, if we're going to truly educate people, we need to give more information on what this is, and why we're doing it, versus just saying they're wrong.
Patsy?
The included some of what I was going to say, and that's that I'm not going to repeat.
Lisa?
I, I guess this concludes the committee meeting, but I wanted to thank the committee members, Patty, Robin, President Nichols. A lot of thoughtful comments and questions were asked in committee, and answered by staff and the commissioner yesterday. And I'm very glad we had so many people here today, in that we are listening. And as indicated by some of my board members, accuracy in some instances weren't there. And how to educate and inform, I guess is a better word, how we do that is very important. So I do want people to know we are listening. And according to what I read in my report today, what they're going to consider, I gave a list of five bullets, additions, exclusions, considerations for change. And what that will look at, will look like, will depend on what we, what we hear, and what we know from the standards. So thank you, everybody, for your comments and questions.
Thank you, Lisa. Moving on to Agenda Item 7.4A. Lisa, is there a motion on Item 7.4A?
Yes, Madam President. I move to approve the accreditation for the 17 educational service units appearing on the accompanying list for the 2021-2022 school year, in accordance with the provisions of Rule 84.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Motion made by Lisa, seconded by Robin. Is there any discussion on this motion? Seeing none, Andrea, please call the roll.
Neary?
Yes.
Fricki?
Yes.
Cojones?
Yes.
Morrison?
Yes.
Stevens?
Yes.
Nichols?
Yes.
Goobles?
Yes.
Tim? Seven yes, one absent.
Motion passes. Agenda Item 7.5, the AQUEST Student Success Access and Support Domain Committee. Patsy, do we have a report?
Yes, Madam President.
Yes, Madam President, we do. I think Don, I always, I hope I'm saying his name right, Don Losky, as opposed to be here, he wanted to talk about this maybe a little. Maybe not. Okay.
Oh, I am here.
Oh, yay! Okay. Don, do you want to just summarize this for the board?
Thank you. While we are moving forward, our Rule 18 interim program schools that are listed, there are 14, that are listed on the accompanying materials for the 21-22 school year. These are schools that meet Rule 18 regulations, procedures for the approval of interim program schools and county detention homes, institutions, and juvenile emergency shelters. They're kind of a unique school for students that are housed, or in a, in a program that, for various reasons, but there, it's, one of the, one of the regulations is that they have to be in a residential program. And so these meet those, meets that requirement also.
Thank you, Don. Also, I, during the meeting, the question was asked about, where do you find these schools, the lists of these schools? And Don told us that they were on the website. And so if you're looking for them, if you go to NDE's website, you would be able to find those.
Does that conclude your report?
Nope. But we're going to do, I'll be, or we're going to keep going, okay. All right. And then...
Well, we can do the action item first.
Yeah, let's do that.
Okay. So for action, or for Agenda Item 7.5A, Patsy, is there a motion on it?
Yes, Madam Chair, there is. I move to approve the interim program schools appearing on the list with this agenda item to operate for the 2021-22, 2022 school year, under Rule 18.
Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Motion made by Patsy, seconded by Patty. Is there any discussion?
Madam Chair, just a point of clarification. Are we hearing, do you have any discussion about this?
Yes. Yeah, I'll be asking, yeah. The motion was made by Patsy and seconded by Patty. Is there any discussion on the motion? Lisa?
I was wondering if the commissioner could answer a question for me. It seems like there was something in the legislature this session that would improve the, the Rule 18 interim schools. Will, will this include those potential improvements when we vote for, for this?
Now, this is simply our kind of annual review and process, and so we're recommending that you approve these particular schools at this time, so.
At this time, okay. Thank you for the clarification.
Any other discussion? Seeing none, Andrea, please call the roll.
Morrison?
Yes.
Goobles?
Yes.
Fricki?
Yes.
Nichols?
Yes.
Neary?
Yes.
Cojones?
Yes.
Stevens?
Yes.
Tim? Seven yes, one absent.
Thank you, Andrea.
We also had Melody Hobson was in to visit with us about early childhood. And the next step in the meeting was, there was not an action item with that, it was simply a, an update from her. So I'm sure we'll be bringing you more about that later. Then the other thing that happened in this meeting was a report from Leading for Equity and Excellence, an update for the equity, the equity policy. We now have all kinds of different separate pieces concerning equity, and we're wanting to put them together into a policy that we can publish as a Department of Education. And so Zainab and I worked really, really hard on plan of action, and a survey to send out to our committee members as to what, as they read the pieces, should we keep them, remove them, first of all, review them, review them, remove them, or rewrite them. And so those are due to us on May 28. And then we will come back to the board with what our findings are, and what our next steps will be for the equity policy. Also included in that was a timeline. We created a timeline for ourselves, and we created a timeline for the committee to get it, get the whole process moving. And that's the end of my report.
I have a quick question.
Yes.
I was listening, but I guess I wasn't thinking hard enough while you were talking. You mentioned something about bringing back to the committee, something. What was that about?
That, that is a survey that we gave our committee, with all of the pieces that we've created over the last year and a half, or whatever it is, that we've been working on this. And it had each one of the pieces that we've created, the equity educational statement, the non-discrimination statement that we have, that either what we created, or it was already in existence, I should say. And we're asking our committee to look at them, to review all of those, and to decide whether we need to, what in it needs to be removed or retained, kept. And even rewrite a little, if they want to go in and say, "Add this, do this," that's what.
Now, this, this committee, is it just the four board members and Zainab? Or are we talking about a larger circle?
The circle gets larger as we go. The Policy Committee has a part in this, so it'll be going to the Policy Committee. Also, the Strategic Plan Committee and Rule 10, we're foreseeing that it would be involved in that. And then if Lain and Shirley are still working on the equity report card, that might be a part of it as well. But we're trying to bring everything together now, and decide how we're going to fit it together, and then use it.
Okay. Thank you. Does anyone else have any discussion or questions for Patsy? Thank you, Patsy.
You're welcome.
Agenda Item 7.6, the Budget and Finance Committee. Patty, are you taking that over for Pat?
I am. I am Pat today.
You're Pat today. I like that.
The Budget and Finance Committee had a very good discussion, and questions asked of each of the three consent agenda items that were reviewed. The items and questions that were asked included things like, which districts will be impacted, how many districts will be in, participating in these particular activities or events? Also, discussion around, are these continuation initiatives, or are they new activities? And then just general discussion about the scope of the work that is to be performed. The committee had no concerns related to the consent agenda items. We also then had a discussion and information from Bryce related to the 2020 Single Audit Report. I'm not sure if Bryce is available, and if he would want to make comments about that or not. Not sure that he is.
I, I am available.
Okay.
I don't, there's any, I guess if there's any questions.
All right. Why don't I, Bryce, I will just read through our committee report, and then if there are questions, if you'd be available, that'd be great. So the, Bryce did review the single audit findings, both discussing the process for the audit, and then how these findings will be reviewed by the federal government. The staff noted that no findings were related to fraud, that's a good thing, and that three of the findings were related to our, our sub-recipient monitoring process. But the expectation is that when the federal government reviews the audit, that those three findings will be cleared. The remaining findings were related to process or documentation, and each finding has already had a corrective action that identified and actually that is in place to address those issues noted. Bryce, anything to add? Or at this point, I guess if there are questions? This is an action item, so.
Bryce? Nothing?
I don't have anything to add.
Anyone have any questions for Bryce? Okay. So...
I'll, I'll finish the report. Or do you want to do the action item?
Action item, yeah. So Patty, is there a motion on 7.6A, the Single Audit Report?
There is, thank you. I move to accept the 2020 Single Audit Report.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Deborah. So the motion was made by Patty and seconded by Deborah. Is there any further discussion? Seeing none, Andrea, please call the roll.
Stevens?
Yes.
Fricki?
Yes.
Neary?
Yes.
Goobles?
Yes.
Morrison?
Yes.
Cojones?
Yes.
Nichols?
Yes.
Tim? Seven yes, one absent.
Motion passes. You may continue, Patty.
Thank you. The committee also reviewed the monthly board travel expenses and had no concerns. In addition, the in-state travel authorizations were reviewed and no issues or concerns were voiced with those. And that concludes the Budget and Finance Committee report.
Thank you, Patty. Agenda Item 7.7, Strategic Planning, Performance, and Improvement Committee. Deborah, do you have a report?
I do, thank you. The Strategic Planning, Performance, and Improvement is, committee is, we're reporting on a committee update and an action item. The committee received a recommendation from NDE staff to exempt the 2019-2020 school year in the Priority School Timeline, which is on the agenda for today's meeting as an action item. And the committee recommends the approval of this action item. And additionally, we did discuss further about our strategic plan and how we want to update it, and we had more questions than answers, but the discussion was great, like we're making progress. And so that concludes the report, the committee report for the Strategic Planning, Performance, and Improvement Committee. Thank you.
Okay. Is there any discussion on that report from Deborah? Robin?
On the, on the priority schools. Okay, explain again what the decision, or what the recommendation is, or whether it's a decision. I just want to make sure I understand.
All right. So Shirley, I might be calling on you, but my understanding is that for the Priority School Timeline, they're on, a Priority School is on for three years. And because of the pandemic and all of the chaos that came about last year, we're extending that, add one more year on for those schools that are on the priority list right now. Is that correct? Thank you. Okay.
And then just a follow-up. First of all, thank you very much for that. Do, Santi and Skylar, are they consulted about this? Or is this just a decision that is made? And if they were consulted, they're fine with it, and so on and so forth? Sorry, Shirley.
Good afternoon, everyone. So I am here definitely as an advocate of the schools. This is something that both Skylar Central High School, the superintendent and their local board, as well as Santi Community Schools, their interim superintendent and local board have both requested this, as well as, if you notice, on the supplemental document that was attached to maintain consistency with our federal designation process, we want to go ahead and make this official to exempt the 2019-2020 school year for priority schools.
Thank you very much.
Patsy?
Robin, to add to what you had to say, and to you, Shirley, I wanted to just take a moment to reflect, those of you who are on the board, when we were naming priority schools, it didn't go over as a big honor right at first. And as a matter of fact, some people were upset that they were named as a priority school. And now they're asking not only to stay, to stay on, but to lose that year and wait and still be supported by the NDE and the Priority School Program. And so I guess what I want to say is that that's a huge evolution in feeling and thought. And I really wanted to thank you and the people you work with, Shirley, because I know that a big part of that is the person you are and how you work with people and all the work you've done.
Thank you.
I did all that. Thanks. All right. Deborah, is there a motion on 7.6A?
Yes, Patsy will share that.
I move to exempt the 2019-2020 school year in the Priority School Timeline due to the continuing impact of the COVID-19 pandemic and suspension of statewide assessment and accountability classifications.
Is there a second?
Yes.
Motion made by Patsy, seconded by Deborah. Is there any further discussion on this motion? Seeing none, Andrea, please call the roll.
Fricki?
Yes.
Neary?
Yes.
Stevens?
Yes.
Nichols?
Yes.
Morrison?
Yes.
Cojones?
Yes.
Goobles?
Yes.
Tim? Seven yes, one absent.
Motion passes. Agenda Item 8, Additional Business. There are no additional business items. Agenda Item 9, Information Items and Reports. 9.1, 9.2, and 9.3, those information items and written reports for the board are for our information only, and they are posted in your SPAR. Agenda Item 10, Good of the Order. This section of the agenda is intended for board members to offer informal observations of the work of the State Board. Board members may make brief announcements about attendance at future events for the purpose of informing other board members. No business or motions or suggested actions of the board may be offered at this point in the agenda, nor should any board members engage in substantive discussion about other agenda items or introduce new agenda items. Does anyone have anything for the Good of the Order? Patty?
Yes, I just wanted to inform other board members that the Nebraska Association of School Boards has graciously invited us as individual board members, each month, or as frequently as we would like, not any more than once a month, to produce a short video summarizing the month's work of the State Board of Education. I will be doing probably the first two of those, but this is not a Patty thing. I want this to be open to any other board members who would like to participate in doing that. So I just wanted to let you know that that opportunity is available to all of us.
Thank you, Patty. We'll be taking you up on that. Thank you. Remind us about that, please. Lisa?
I just wanted to ask Patty, is this just using...
Microphone.
Is this just using your video here, or are you going somewhere to have it taped? Matt Belka from NASB and I are still communicating about that. I was waiting until after our board meeting because I envisioned that what each of us would be presenting is just a quick summary of what the board's working on and what action was taken. It will either be us videotaping ourselves and then sending it to Matt, or I'm going to just check with him and see if there would be availability, and he would be interested in having us come to NASB to do it. I can't, I'm not promising that, because I haven't had that conversation with him, but that's where it is. Because my tech skills are...
Any other board members? I would just like to quick add that I was on a Zoom with NASB early last week on a budget and finance thing. And the question was asked, is the fall meeting going to be held in Phoenix, or is it going to be held online? That decision has yet to be made. Anyone else? Seeing none. Agenda Item 11, Adjournment. Thank you for those who attended in person this morning and staff who have been with us all day and who tuned in to the broadcast. As needed, a work session will be held on Thursday, June 3, at a time and location to be determined. A business meeting will be held on Friday, June 4, at 9:00 a.m., at a location to be determined. The May State Board meeting is adjourned.